But, we're on. What just happened?
No, this guy. You got that?
Yep.
Thank you, Burley.
Thank you. So, we'll do a restart. So, I'll call the meeting to order. And on the agenda, item number one is to call the meeting to order to welcome everyone and take a roll call. And I believe all trustees, except Michael Beers, are here. So, let me just... Okay. And so, the next thing is the Pledge of Allegiance. So, if we all can stand. And will the student trustees start us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the next item is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. And there is one correction to the agenda. I was traveling last week when the final agenda was sent out, so I didn't get to see it until they were distributed. So, under 9A1, on page two, under recommendations, there's a... The first sentence will just strike that. This is information only tonight. And so, it would not come with a recommendation at this point. But, the rest of the information is informational. And with that change, are there any other requests to modify the agenda in any way? See, none? Then we'll go ahead and approve the agenda and move on to approving minutes. In our packet, we have the Board of Trustees' regular minutes from April 10, 2018, beginning on page six. Are there any corrections to those minutes that anyone saw? Seeing none, then... And trustee Beers is coming in the door. So, we have everybody here. And so, is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April 10, 2018? Moved by trustee Kendall, seconded by trustee Smith. All those in favor of approving the April 10 minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to the regular meeting minutes from April 24, 2018, beginning on page 16. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Seeing none? Then is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April 24, 2018? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Bragstad. All those in favor of approving the April 24 regular meeting minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. We move on to 5A, which is public comment on non-agenda items. This is a time to comment on any item that the board won't later be discussing. And so, it can be anything that is of interest to the school district that you'd like to let us know about. Because it's public comment on non-agenda items, there won't be any board discussion. But if it warrants additional action, you can either be contacted privately, or we can discuss adding it to an agenda item in the future. And so, if you can come to the podium, and I think we have a piece of paper there, just to sign your name in. And if you represent an organization, can you just state that while you state your name out loud? And then, we'd like you to keep the comments to about three minutes, just to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, but allow us to get on with the agenda items as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. Melanie Charleston, President, Missoula Education Association, First Vice President, Montana Federation of Public Employees. Today is National Teacher Appreciation Day. And while I think teachers and all educators should be appreciated daily, it's especially nice to have a little recognition. It's lovely. My sincere thanks to the educators in Missoula County Public Schools and all others across this state and nation, and every single one of us. We're in our chosen professions because of an educator and their support and their belief in us. This evening, I also want to give my special thanks and sincere thanks to all those of you who attended the Missoula Education Foundation Kentucky Derby Party this past Saturday. Special thanks to Mr. Pat McQ and Heidi Kendall for your attendance. And a very sincere thank you to your family, Marcia, for your very generous donation to our silent auction. It was truly special. Thank you. The Missoula Education Classroom Grant Application Deadline was last Monday. We received 51 applications for the classroom grant program. And the total amount of ask was $101,000. So, we will not be able to hit that this year. So, we have quite a task ahead of us. We'll be reviewing those applications on May 14, and we'll announce the recipient soon after. We're not quite at the end of the 2017-18 school year. And Teacher Appreciation Week, though, is a bit of a time for reflection. This year, so far, has presented its share of successes and some challenges. Members of Missoula A have engaged in conversations and attempts to try to problem-solve as issues arise, and we will certainly continue to do so. In early April, Missoula A Board decided we need a bit of a written approach. So, the Board drafted a series of statements of support. 410 out of roughly 560 tenured certified educators signed the statements. They are as follows. We support professional collaborative behavior among all employees. A positive working environment promoting civil discourse. Honest professional conversations in which conflicting views are allowed and acknowledged. Curriculum review compensation is defined in the collective bargaining agreement. Formal and transparent process for any district work, including participation of MEA and choosing members for curriculum review work. Each grade and school level or grade band, such as K1, 2, 3, etc., and in special education, including having representation on the review. High-quality professional development. Member voice in planning and delivery of PD. The use of existing district PIR days and Thursday early outs for professional development. Members remaining in their assigned jobs as much as possible during the student contact day. And compensation for work requested outside of the contract day. We've had a lot of work on these issues this year, and I know will continue as we look forward to 18-19 school year. Human relationships really are the heart of this profession. We seek positive relationships among students and all of our colleagues. Trustees and administration can show their true appreciation of trustees by acknowledging the precious time they have to spend with students. Respect their professional voice. Engage in conversations with educators, yet listen more than speak. Build a relationship with them based upon authentic human interactions. Thank them for the incredible work they do daily, not only on the first week of May. And I want to give my sincere thanks to every single one of you sitting here at this table for the work that you all do on behalf of our students and the public that we serve. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sign in and then state your name, and if you represent an organization, identify the organization.
Am I on? Okay. My name is Dr. Amy Haynes. I've been a physician here in Missoula for the last 35 years. I'm a parent of two students in high school right now. My last fall... Last Christmas, my granddaughter asked me if she could come live with us. And of course, I said yes. She was a freshman. Within a week or two, I realized why she had asked us if she could live with us. She came home most afternoons in tears, in the darkest of despair. Hopelessness, feeling useless, alone, curling up in a dark room, and her grades were failing. We quickly found out that she was being badly bullied at school by a group of kids who seemed to be fairly organized in the halls, in the parking lot, at the mall. Cruel things were said, things about encouraging her to kill herself and encouraging her in ways to do that. A lot of personal comments that we couldn't really get those adjectives out of her. We, of course, went to the assistant principal, which is where we were supposed to go. And we spoke at length. We were told that the only thing we really could do was to give names of the bullies. I prefer to call them hostiles than bullies. And that was all we could do. That was it. There was no reception for any other ideas, no attempts at other kinds of problem-solving. No other solutions would be entertained. Give the names, and that was it. So, we did that. I was pretty disturbed by the whole situation. So, I went to the social worker of the school, who told me that that's truly the case. There's nothing that really can be done, except for that, and that there really is no language to... Or no protocols to follow for when bullying is being reported. I went to the school counselor, the same thing. Teachers, same thing. In my despair about what was going on, I actually went to the school janitor, who actually gave me the best advice. Six weeks went by, and nothing really changed, until one evening, I came home to find that my child had been thinking about and texting to her friends about suicide. Very graphically, about how it was going to be done, and in the bathroom, etc., etc., that very graphically, this was imminent. So, of course, we called the school at that point. And I called the hotlines. I called Empower Montana. I called Bikers Against Bullies. I called the principal. I did everything that I thought that I could do. I wrote a letter to all of her teachers explaining what was happening. I did the greatest sin, I think, in that I named names, asking for help for our child and asking for help for the bullies as well, because I consider them to be also victims and also in need of help. We are not punitive people. We are not interested in punishment. We're interested in action, in taking a hold of a situation and actually making changes. At a meeting, it was found out that nothing had been done, absolutely nothing, that they were waiting. I'm not sure what the school was waiting for, but nothing had been done. I looked in the guidelines. There's really not much in terms of the guidelines as far as bullying goes. I'm sure you're all familiar with the guidelines. It basically says, "Report the bullying to the authorities." But, nothing is after that. There's no protocols. There's no recommendations. There's nothing. There's nothing in the language. Now, the schools know this, and actually, the students know this too. The people that don't know it are actually the parents. The parents that don't know that there's no language for bullying here in Missoula. The community doesn't know. And I know that you are all aware that bullying is one of the main causes for suicide across the country, and we found this to be graphically so in our own home. I called other schools out of the state and found out what some of their protocols were, and there are... There is language in other states. I was told that she wouldn't be a victim of bullying if she just belonged to a sport. And, you know, I hear that. I understand that. But, we don't have a sporty girl. We don't have someone who's interested in sports. She's not good at them, and it just wouldn't work for her. Also, in her family, there wasn't a lot of ability to get her to sports and to pick her up from sports. What we were told is that it's the child's responsibility to report bullying. And I think that this is silly, because the children that are at risk for bullying are not the children that are going to report bullying. They're not necessarily the children who are going to be joining clubs. But I still don't think that this vulnerable population should be left to their own devices. And I don't think that the students at the school, the hostile students or the perpetrators of this, should be left to their own devices either. They need help just as much as anybody else. So, I'm requesting that the school board put together a task force or put together some kind of a committee and to actually look at outside sources of help, not just within the school or within the school board. But there are people out there that are willing to help us. You know, Empower Montana, Bikers Against Bullies, other people are willing to help us. And if we keep it insulated, like it's been so far, I don't think that we're going to get any new answers. I think it'll be just the same old answers that we've always gotten. I think that what I learned when I walked through the school system like this was that the administrations of the school are pretty separate from the students. They really don't blend with the students. They really don't know what's going on. I was surprised to find that the school psychologist didn't even know who my child was. And yet, she was highly targeted as being vulnerable to bullies. I think that we need a committee or a task force with the mandate to write the language. Even if the schools choose not to use the recommendations, I still think that the language should be there. And I think that it's a pretty immediate need. I think that it's a dreadful need. It's a... I was surprised to find that it wasn't there. I would like to have the task force start to make recommendations about resiliency and empowerment, and we can really make a difference in these children's lives. I know that my child is heavily scarred from this incident. I think that she'll bear the scars for the rest of her life. I know this because I have friends who were bullied, and they do bear the scars for the rest of their life. And how many of us look back at our high school years with absolute dread and panic to think about what's happening in high school? A lot of parents are saying, "Just get through high school. Just deal with it and get out and live your life." And I don't think that that's the way it needs to be. I think that we can do better than that. All right. Well, I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
All right. So, I was here once before already. I'm Melody Stenger, and I will be very brief, because I'm mostly here to introduce a pint-sized speaker. Just as a reminder, I have a fifth grader at Paxton who's seated right over here, who had quite a long delay in his diagnosis with dyslexia, four years, where teachers with misinformation told me that that wasn't the problem with my child. So, we're four years behind getting him set up. Thankfully, it's going very well now. In the last month, I will be very happy to tell you that not only is the tutoring going very well, but finding out other families in Missoula who have had this struggle, who are continuing with this struggle, has been really empowering. There's a lot of them, really good people to talk to. And the relationship with the board, talking with Mark and getting some contacts for how to move forward. Everybody has been very helpful, very supportive. So, that's really exciting, and it's just what Missoula is like, right? So, anyway, one of the conversations with one of these families that I became connected to went home to their dinner table. And in talking with their family, their daughter, a second grader, said that she had some things to tell you. So, if you wouldn't mind, Esme Bartuska is going to come up here and give you a couple of comments as a dyslexic kiddo.
We have a stool. We came prepared. All right, kiddo. Okay. Would you like me to go ahead and sign Esme's name in here? Okay. I'm her mom, Jamie.
Can you just hold her?
Want me to hold her? Okay. We have to sign you in.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Esme Bartuska, and I am a second grader at Franklin Elementary. I am smart, funny, careful, and full of love. And I am dyslexic. I think school is okay. I can be... It can be hard for me because of my dyslexia. But, I am a good problem solver, and I work hard. I love my art, PE, and music classes, because they are fun, and I am good at them. I also love library, because I love books. I don't always like going to school. School doesn't make me feel good. I feel like I am being told that I am not smart enough, trying hard enough, and I am not working fast enough. Did you know that dyslexia... Dyslexia?
Being dyslexic.
Being dyslexic means that I have a different brain. I see and understand the world a lot differently. My brain is smart and creative. My imagination is so big that sometimes I get lost in it. I love my brain. It makes me me. Some people think I have a disability, but I don't. I just have... I just learn differently. And how you teach me matters. I want you to know I am out here, and that there are a bunch of other kids just like me. We matter. Thank you.
And that's a lot of courage from somebody who's struggling to read, isn't it?
Well done, Burley. Thank you very much. Any other public comment on any non-agenda items?
Hello. My name is Ezra Shear from Sentinel High School and a member of this community. You guys turned in your ballots, right? Yeah. It's right over there, if you haven't. This is a great segue. I've been at Sentinel High School for seven years now. I've seen some really tight fiscal times. And Mr. Thane shared with us at Sentinel High School that we may face some of these tight times again next year, and hopefully, we pass another levy. The community in Missoula supports us wholeheartedly. If we don't pass that levy, I would like to strongly ask you not to cut paraeducators and support staff, so we can ensure that our most vulnerable populations continue to be able to have the quality of education they deserve and they should have. Because we keep moving in a direction where we cut these paras and they never come back. At Sentinel High School, we used to have a halftime position that was dedicated for career in college counseling. That has never come back. Which students are able to get college counseling now? The students whose parents have a means to buy that outside. And the counselors are... Our counselor staff is amazing, but our senior counselor has 300-some-odd students, and there's only one of him. And the message from the district is, "You need to ensure high graduation rates." And we do that over and over and over again. So, just if we have to make cuts, there's other ways, which brings me to a solution for you. Job-embedded professional development continues to drain our fiscal responsibilities in this district, and it continues to hurt our students and our learning. I would like for you to put it on the agenda for an upcoming meeting, because at some point, we decided to change past practice. We decided to take the 68 hours every single teacher is required to do for professional development, and then take them out of the classroom and pile on during the school day. Do you know how much that costs us? It costs us $90 a sub, plus the rate you're paying the teacher, plus administrators are attending, so that's the rate you're paying the administrators. In addition to that, you have the lost educational opportunity. HPE, ELA, math, science pulled out of their classrooms. Linda Smith shared with you that data. We have a fiscal responsibility to look and save the money we can, wherever we can. And if we can save money and increase educational outcomes by letting highly-trained professional teachers do the job that the taxpayers want us to do, they do not want to pay us to sit in a room for professional development when we have 68 hours per teacher of professional development. That doesn't cost them a dime, because it's already been negotiated into the contract. Put it on the agenda. When was that decision made? Who made that decision? Was it you, the board? Was it us, the membership? Was it a collaborative effort to ensure that we had high-quality professional development? No. When was the decision made? Put it on the agenda, so we can have the conversation in the open. And I'm just going to share one last piece of data, because we love it. Actually, two. One's, show me the money. We like the money. As of March 23, the district had spent close to $115,000 on substitutes for professional development. That's a lot of money. And, in addition to that, the My Voice data is great. We just had a new, fresh batch of My Voice data. I shared you the numbers from 2016-2017 for the three high schools, the urban high schools. Remember, there were 36% of Sentinel High School teachers who believed that there was high-quality professional development available to them in 1617. This year, we've pulled more teachers out of the classroom to engage in embedded, job-embedded PD than we did in 1617. The numbers for 1718 of teachers who believe meaningful professional development exists in my district, strongly or agree in its entirety, went from 36% to 23%. Those who strongly disagree with that statement went from 22% up to 32.5%. We need to have a conversation about job-embedded PD. Ask for the data. Ask for the money. Do and let us do our jobs and remain in the classroom when there are a myriad of alternatives. Melanie's brought them before this body. We've talked about it for a year now. We're not going to stop talking about it. Let us do the job the taxpayers want us to do, and that's teach our students in the classroom every single day that we can. Because every other district in the country is doing everything they can to keep their teachers in the classroom, and we are moving in the opposite direction. And if you're not going to let us keep doing our job, then give me the benchmark. Set a goal. What's the goal? Drive the decision by data. ACT scores will improve by this many points. If they don't, just pull it. Make the decision together. Someone made this decision. This is costing our learners, and it's costing our taxpayer dollars. And if the people who are voting to pass another levy in Missoula County's public schools did their homework and knew how much we are paying subs to do the job they're paying us to do, they'd be heartbroken. Thank you.
Any other comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none? Then we'll move on to 5B is correspondence, and there is written correspondence in the packet, beginning on page 24. Then 6A is our community connection. And tonight, we're going to be highlighting the Flagship After-School Program. And so, Superintendent Thane, I didn't know if you want to introduce Nicole?
Yes.
Nicole Mitchell from Western Montana Mental Health Center Flagship Program is going to give us an update.
Thank you. I don't know that we need much of an... Excuse me, an introduction for Nicole. She's been a great fixture in the district, and Flagship has been a program that's benefited numerous students over the years. And we're grateful for that collaboration and for the support that Flagship provides to the students in the district. So, we like annually to have an update, and Nicole's prepared to give our 2017-18 update on the Flagship program. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah. I have some impact reports. I emailed it out, but I'll pass them around, too, just to have real copies for you to look at, too. So, thank you so much, Marco. It was really sweet. And happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I know as a parent, the value of education and having amazing teachers for my own kids, and some of them are in the room right here, and MCPs is filled with them. So, thank you. Okay. So, I'm Nicole. I'm with the Flagship program. Flagship provides after-school opportunities in eight Missoula County public schools. We're under the umbrella of Western Montana Mental Health Center, and we offer school-based programming in mentoring and skill-building. Flagship's after-school core focus is academic achievement, health and wellness, art and culture, and positive social development. Each participating Flagship school site has a full-time youth development coordinator dedicated to the coordination of the programming for that respective school. Currently, Flagship is in eight Missoula County public schools: Franklin, Hawthorne, and Lowell Elementary School; CS Porter, Meadow Hill, and Washington Middle School; and Hellgate and Willard Alternative High Schools. Our youth development coordinators develop various after-school activities like coding, art, dance, rock climbing, and cooking. They enroll kids in these programs and recruit volunteers to lead and assist in the activities after-school each semester. Something you might not know about Flagship is that we collaborate closely with the University of Montana College of Education, Health and Human Performance, Psychology, and Social Work Departments. Through a partnership with the College of Education, U M's Level 2 field-experienced students develop lesson plans and curriculum and implement and teach in Flagship after-school programs. Other service-learning partnerships include Annie Sandig's Community Health Class, Sherry Lekala's Business and Motivational Leadership, Addiction Studies through the Social Work Department, and Health and Human Performance Department, and Health and Human Performance Exercise Science. Flagship was started twenty-two years ago as a prevention program for substance use and does provide specific interventions that include Above the Influence in all of our middle school, excuse me, middle and high schools through Red Ribbon Week, Alcohol True Stories through Diversity Week in our high schools, and Project Northland in our middle school sites. All these interventions provide education and awareness for substance use. Prevention on a broader scale though really means social and emotional support. And flagship does this through positive adult mentoring, providing social skills for kids and families, and making those connections to the school day. We align with MCPS's MBI policy as well and each school's specific behavior policies to create a consistent and safe after-school environment for all kids. Thank you again for having me and I'm excited to share some highlights from the school you're with you. With the support of MCPS this fall with Mark, Julie, Karen, and Carol, we decided to move back to Meadow Hill Middle School. Christina Stevens, the principal at Meadow Hill and the school staff were super excited and have been fantastic and supportive in that move. But it's definitely been a year of capacity building and reintroducing families and kids to flagship. This summer Meadow Hill will actually be hosting our Washington and Meadow Hill Summer Program due to the construction at Washington. And this fall, we also hosted two Southeast Asian Fellows through the Mansfield Center's Pro Fellows Program. We had Trang from Vietnam and Vile from Cambodia who spent four weeks with us this fall and October, learning about nonprofit leadership, education, and after-school programming. They loved observing in the classrooms, working with the kids, meeting with MCPS staff like Mark and Carol, and with teachers and principals as well. Each grade level in our flagship team contributes significantly to the impact of the children and families at their school. This school year, our elementary team created an intramural soccer and basketball program where each school had the chance to play each other's school team. And it provided a really fabulous family engagement opportunity where they would come and watch the games and cheer the kids on. Our flagship team also took the kids to a UM Grizz football and basketball game as well. And they took their theater kids just this past week to The Little Mermaid at MCT. So we're pretty lucky to have them on our team. Our middle school team this spring just created this art program where they did, it was a collaboration, so one group would start with an art project and it would be passed from school to school to finish it. They did a prevention strategy, Project Northland, to all the seventh graders, which we found really powerful. Like I think it was an opportunity for kids to ask questions that, and get information that they weren't really sure about in a really safe environment. And they collaborated on a Martin Luther King Social Justice Day. So we're really proud of our middle school team too. And our high school team makes a significant impact as well. As we all know, adolescents are such a vulnerable population and they create a safety net for those teens in both of our high schools. They provide amazing after-school opportunities like cross-country skiing, rock climbing, gladiators, hiking, art, and as well as putting on Diversity Week. This summer, flagship will be putting on a six-week summer camp at all three of our middle schools and elementary schools. It'll run June eleventh through July twentieth. And finally, I just want to say flagship is funded through county, state, and federal grants, foundations, and donors through fundraising efforts. And we are incredibly grateful for the partnership with Missoula County Public Schools. We receive funding through the Twenty-First Century Grant and Carol Yoon and I have been working on the competitive grant this spring and are super hopeful that that funding will continue. So we are incredibly grateful and love being partners with Missoula County Public Schools. So thank you.
Any questions? Any public comment? Oh, sure. Thanks. I couldn't see.
As a Lowell parent for five years now, I can tell you that the Lowell community is deeply appreciative of everything that flagship does and that the kids who participate in flagship are getting enriching opportunities with organizations like MCAT. My son lit fires on the playground under close supervision last fall. Did all kinds of things that kids would not have the opportunity to do who can't afford other kinds of after-school opportunities. And so we're really appreciative of everything you all do.
Thank you so much, Grace.
Sorry, any other questions or comments? Seen none? Well, thanks Nicole.
Okay, thank you so much for having me. Have a good night.
Now we move on to item seven A on the agenda, which is under the recognition segment of the agenda. And so Mrs. Allen is going to introduce us to several people, it looks like.
Yes, and I'm going to start by recognizing our student trustee Marina Gray, who is a member of this year's Champion Robotics Team. And I just, I appreciate this opportunity to spend a little time recognizing robotics. In a few minutes, we're going to hear about English Language Arts, where we talk about reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And I can guarantee you that the students who participate in this wonderful STEM activity, science, technology, engineering, and math in robotics, use their English Language Arts all the time. And I think the two skills that may be the strongest in robotics team members are the listening and speaking. And when, if you have the opportunity to ever listen to how they talk about how they program things, how they go out and listen to the competition and come back, how they put deals together with other groups, right? This all takes English Language Arts skills way beyond some of them that we think about. I did want to take just a minute to recognize Alan Bronnik who's here. He's one of our mentors and you've seen him before. I also want to take a minute to recognize Lance McFarland is the young man standing tall over there. And his mom got a special recognition this year for being a really involved mentor. And one of the things she did when they went to Calgary, every day or three times a day, she sent back emails and they made you feel like you were right there and you had, it was like you were moving with them. I'm, I'm not sure I've ever read emails that were as engaging as hers were. So we, we want to take a special minute to recognize our mentors. And then I'm going to let Marina introduce the coach. And then you guys will do your thing.
Yeah, so she mentioned Alan and Lisa McFarland. And then our head mentor is Dave Hamilton. This was his first year doing it and he's retiring this year. So one and done, but he took us further. He, he took our team further than we've ever gone before. So I'd say that's pretty successful. And we also have Mr. Landy, but he's probably off programming somewhere. That's what he does. So...
Can I introduce our...
Okay, so our robotics members here are John Kaufman. He's from Big Sky High School. Again, Missoula Robotics Team is all of the high schools in Missoula. Then we have Grant Story. He's here and then Lance Nichols, who's also here. And then our robot, Ella Vader, you'll see in a second, is here.
Marina mentioned the, the competition in Calgary. This team took third out of, how many teams? Like thirty teams. And they, getting to go to Calgary is a great experience because there are international teams there. So they got, they got, I, I with Superintendent Thane. They got to meet kids from all over the world. The other thing was that this team got a special award for, do you want to tell about it?
Of course. So we also got the Spirit Award, which means we cheered the loudest, we had the most, you know, professionalism, but also the most enthusiasm, which is saying something as a little team from Montana competing against teams from, you know, oh my gosh. Mexico, Germany, all over the world. So that was super fun. Yeah, so right now John is controlling the robot. I heard someone said that. But also, we have to program the robot to drive on its own, which is, yeah, a little bit more about the competition. She was talking about collaborating, but part of the competition is that for some of the part, part of it, you are working against other teams from around the nation, but things switch up and sometimes you're working with those teams you just competed against. So you have to find the right balance because you don't know if you're going to be working with these people. You don't want to, you know, burn any bridges. So yeah, again, a lot of language, talking with teams from Mexico, you know, really appreciating that language I learned in high school and actually getting practical application of that. And then also talking to other teams about, you know, components on our robot. So if you have any questions, be sure to talk to them or shoot Mr. Hamilton an email and we'd love to hear back from you guys.
Thank you, Marina.
So any questions or comments? I have just one. As a former robotics coach for middle school teams for the, well, for about four years at Hellgate Elementary where my son went to school, I was only able to go to the high school competition over in Bozeman and it was so exciting there and it's so crazy and it's, it's literally so difficult to explain how crazy it is. And sometimes your robot actually does a task that you didn't even plan for it to do and you get points even though you weren't planning on those points. But I can't imagine how much more exciting it will be to go to the international level. So congratulations for the team for getting so far and for winning the award. So congratulations. Recognition of our student trustees. So I want to thank the trustees who are here and we'll keep the rest of the certificates to deliver to the trustees who couldn't make it and of course we'll get them up to see Lee Swan. So I'm going to actually leave over here and walk over to you guys. And I really do want to thank you all for being here, for staying connected with your school, so bringing us information both about typical items or activities going on in school, but also the special things that are going on in the schools as well. So we really appreciate your participation as student trustees on the board and I think, I think we won't see any of you back again this year. But Marina, do you want to introduce us to someone?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, I'd like to, you know, just say I'm really grateful for this opportunity I've had to serve on the board kind of this past year. I've learned a lot, so thank you all for being a part of that. But I'd also like to introduce the trustee from Sentinel for next year, Maddie Braun. Yeah, so... At Sentinel, we go through a pretty rigorous application interview process. So, you know, she was selected to be the trustee because she's a great student and a leader within Sentinel. So I'm sure she'll, you know, take this opportunity on to learn just as I have and those before me. So I'd like to welcome her on to, into my place, but also let you guys know her birthday was yesterday. So yeah, happy birthday Maddie. This is a good, a good present.
Cool. And so I also wanted to let you know that we really have appreciated everything you've done, but also just to explain to everybody else, each of the schools selects their student trustees differently. And as Marina indicated, that at Sentinel, it's done in the spring. The other trustees are usually selected in the fall, so we'll be surprised to see who comes to the table next fall. So thank you all for being here. And with that, we'll segue right into student trustee reports. So Brendan, do you want to start?
All right, so, hi. With school year coming to a close, so is the original Willard Building, which will be ready to be replaced and moved, moved out of sometime next year. Next Friday, Willard will also be hosting a Willard Night, which is the basic equivalent of Willard's Prom. And it's brand new this year. Of course, Willard students still have the option to attend the prom at their home schools, but now they have this opportunity as well. Willard Night will consist of several different choices of events, including games, karaoke, movies, food. There's going to be clothing swap, et cetera. And it should turn out pretty all right. Willard's next and final graduation of the year will be held on May thirty-first at Willard. Then in the evening at six-thirty to eight at the university, we're going to have a second ceremony celebrating the graduates, all the graduates from this year rather than just those that are graduating this trimester. Then the following day on the first, the school will have its annual all-day, all-school barbecue trip, which, which will be lovely. And this is actually all I have in closing.
Hello, my name's Dylan Dejar. I am Hellgate Student Trustee. So I'm going to go over quite a few things because I've been gone a little bit. So the boys lacrosse right now, they've played right around nine games, but I only have the record for right around six of them. They are one and five. They're looking to turn around the season soon. They've been pretty successful for the last four years. The girls are three and two, and so they're looking pretty good. This is way late, but swimming, the boys Hellgate Swimming Squad, one state, also same with the girls, which is super awesome. The softball teams, today they just had a game, so I don't know how that game went, but both JV and varsity are going through the season without a win. So they're hoping to get the win sooner than later. And BPA, we had seven national qualifiers. We had Mallory Phillips placed fifth in advanced accounting. Mia Foster placed first in financial math and analysis. Calvin Bigley was elected Montana State BPA Vice President and won one of the torch awards. Dan Klaus placed second in personal finance management, won another torch award. Rosie Soden got third in advanced accounting. This is a few months late, but Speech and Debate had, as of today, four national qualifiers. This is an interesting year because Hellgate will not be traveling with coaches for the first time in a few years. We'll be traveling with the two Sentinel coaches, Ms. Britt and Ms. Brooks, who's here. We'd like to thank you so much for this opportunity. It was a, it was an interesting situation with the coaching and they definitely stepped it up and helped us, helped us. So for some science news, Ailey Robinson won the Montana NCWIT Aspiration and Computing Contest, some newspaper awards. Kennedy Maxx won the editorial cartoon grand prize in the Missoula Education Award. Kay McCollough got the editorial grand prize newspaper and education award. This was also a few months back, but ThessCon happened. We had a few awards. Laura Fradkin awarded Best Supporting Actor in the play Gorgon Sisters. Noah Vanawettering won the Tongue Twister Competition in the Thespian Awards. And one Hellgate student that did not want to be named in this report was elected Montana State Thespian President, which is a huge opportunity for him. The Pops Concert for Choir is going to be tomorrow at seven PM. The choir is going to be doing some Fleetwood Mac and then also Queen. So better come down, it's going to be fun. District Music Festival happened a few weeks ago. It was a huge day for the choir because they had over a hundred choral pieces registered and performed, which is a new, like, grand total. And that's my report. Thank you.
So Big Sky tonight was Senior Night for the softball team and they are playing Hellgate. Again, we don't know how that went because it is still in progress. And then this week is also the divisionals for tennis and next week is divisionals for track. Recently, the Hell Science Academy Juniors had their first job shadow. This is their first of three. And right now, the juniors and seniors are in the midst of IB testing. Our science classes have been filling sandbags to help reduce flooding and our Spanish classes are taking salsa dancing this month. The Hell Science Academy Freshmen and Sophomores are also competing in their annual amazing races. I believe the freshmen have already gone and the sophomores will be at the end of this month. And the Hell Science Academy Seniors will be presenting their projects at the University of Montana next week and I believe the date is May sixteenth. Last week was the National Honor Society induction ceremony where the seniors helped to induct the new junior.
to induct the new juniors into the society. And currently, there are several Big Sky students who have their art showcased in the mall. And drama, our drama department recently put on an all-school cabaret, and a few weeks ago, a dance concert, so a quick turnaround for them. We also had prom two weeks ago, and we hosted Special Olympics last week, and we want to wish luck, wish good luck to our Special Olympic athletes competing next week in Great Falls. We also had our eighth grade orientation, which went amazingly well. And International Club is putting on a soccer tournament to help raise money during finals week.
Alrighty. So, last week Sentinel also hosted the eighth grade visitation day. There are about 338th graders who came to tour our school. Sentinel also had prom at the end of April at the Wilma Theater, and it went off without a hitch once again. Recently, a few of our students were honored by Humanities Montana for their strong submissions in the Letters About Literature, which is a national writing competition. Those students honored are Rain Kenmile, Hunter Chitran, Grace Hardy, Sidney Ellis, Nicole Emlyn, William Thomas, and Kendall Hayes. Also, huge congrats to Zach Tenere, Anna Von Essent, Dakota Thomas, Oliver Chin, Maddie Braun, and Max Dupreys for a second-place finish at the state academic tournament this year. This year, the team entered five different competitions and reached the finals in each one. They won three competitions and took second at two. Sentinel's DECA Chapter recently traveled to Atlanta, Georgia for the International Career Development Conference, where students from around the world participated in problem-solving events in the areas of marketing, management, finance, and hospitality. While no Sentinel members finalized, many placed in the top 30% in their events. These top competitors are Maddie Sager, Olivia Jenkinson, Quinn Peacock, Meredith Murdock, Colin Baker, Nash Souter, Kaden Messer, Quinn McKeernan, Ethan Skalsky, Jason Chustari, Stephen Lindberg, Bremer Deaton, and Daniel Wohler. So the chapter as a whole was recognized as the largest chapter in the state of Montana, and was invited to attend an exclusive leadership recognition reception at the Georgia World Congress Center. Spring sports are also winding down. Tennis will play in divisional matches today, tomorrow, and Thursday, and state tennis will take place next week. Track will be competing at the Greg Rice Meet on Thursday, and then their divisionals will be the following week. Softball will be playing in a triple header against non-conference teams of Bozeman, CMR, and Great Falls High on Friday. They are currently the second-place seed in the West, so they're going into state pretty well. Band will be performing in their last concert of the school year on the 22nd at 7:00 PM. Orchestra will be playing the next night on the 23rd, also at 7:00 PM. So once again, please come out to watch some amazing Sentinel talent. Finally, this week and next, 214 Sentinel students are taking 400 AP tests as a final push to the end of the year, and graduation will take place on Saturday, June 2nd at 3:00 PM for Sentinel graduates. I just want to say thank you for all the teachers at Sentinel. You guys are awesome and truly supporting, you know, the future generations of America and the world. So happy National Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Do we have Ibi on the phone?
We will.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Go for it.
All right. So, Seeley Swan, the student council finished up its Earth Week challenges the week after Earth Day, where we encouraged students to reuse, reduce, and recycle. And then on Thursday, we did some cleaning up around the school activities. They also are doing a membership drive on the 23rd with the eighth graders at Seeley Lake Elementary School, along with the Leos Club. The Leos Club has filled some sandbags with the Lions Club back on Saturday to help with flooding in the community, and they also have a car wash planned on June 7th. The drama class has the awesome 80s prom and spaghetti dinner on Thursday, the 10th, at 6:00 PM. And it's a play, of course. The senior class is going to the Mangolch on Monday, the 14th. It was rescheduled from the previous date because of weather, and they're going to learn about the 13 smokejumpers that died in the Mangolch Fire in 1949. And then their graduation is on June 3rd at 1:00 PM, and the underclassmen get out on June 7th. And then sports. In the sports news, we have the track season, the end of the track season is coming up. They're going to district meets Friday and Saturday. Both boys and girls teams have improved tremendously throughout the season. They're looking to take home both gold plaques for the second year in a row. Boys and girls teams also have a great chance to take home the state plaques as well at the track meet in Great Falls two weeks from this weekend. And then golf season is also coming to a close with our single golfer, who is not yet qualified for state, but he is very close. And that's all.
And Ibi, this is Marsha. I just wanted to say thank you. We have a certificate of appreciation that we will get up to you, and we will have one for Keaton. And so we just had acknowledgement of all the student trustees a little bit ago, so I wanted to extend that applause to you as well. So thank you for being there so regularly this year.
Congratulations.
And finally, I just want to say congratulations on where you'll be going to school next year. I happen to live up in Fairbanks at UAF, and I was kind of wishing you'd pick UAF, but anyway, Ibi's going to be going to school on a shooting scholarship, so pretty neat. And which school did you land upon, because you had several choices?
I'll be going to the University of Nebraska in Lincoln.
Cool. Well, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ibi. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks. And now we continue with reports. So 8B is the high school activities report for the winter of 2017-2018. It's found beginning on page 64. There's no oral report. Then we'll move on to C, which is announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you. And it seems like a recurring theme this evening, but I'd be remiss if I didn't express my appreciation to all district staff, it's teacher appreciation, but we know that there are other staff members also who contribute to the ongoing success of the students we serve. And I think we're so fortunate in Missoula to have access to very high-quality staff. As you know, we participate in a collaboration with the NEA, the Carnegie Foundation, and the New Teachers Center on a teacher recruitment and retention initiative. And one of the districts with whom we're collaborating began the year with 50 vacancies that they had not been able to fill certified teaching vacancies. We don't have that problem in Missoula. We have a wealth of highly qualified applicants for each and every job we post, and it's much more routine for us to have 50 applicants for each job. So again, we're deeply indebted to the staff and appreciate all the work that they do each and every day on behalf of the students in this community. There are a number of items referenced on page 65 in the packet, as has already been mentioned, and I noticed Pat's sporting his "I voted" sticker. There is an election being conducted today. We did have trustee seats up for election, however, given single candidates, or in one case, no candidate for a position, those were filled via acclamation. So my congratulations on Election Day to Chair Holland, Trustee Decker, and Trustee Smith, who will be returning for new three-year terms. And I want to express my appreciation to Trustee Brankstedt, who's actually going off the board, and he may have snuck out. He had a 7 o'clock obligation. But we appreciate his service. When the board has its reorganization meeting next week, we'll declare that seat vacant and begin the process of filling it. As I just referenced, there is a special board meeting scheduled for Thursday, May 17th. The agenda's pretty simple. We'll swear in the trustees who will be returning, we'll canvass the May 8th election ballot, and we'll discuss the remaining opening on the board. That will be conducted at 6:00 PM in this room. The next regular board meeting of the trustees will be Tuesday, May 22nd. When I listened to Brandon's report, he indicated Willard's graduation ceremony at the University Music Recital Hall is Thursday, May 31st. He said 6:30 PM. I noticed in the packet it says 7:00, so we'll want to make sure we clarify that time. And later on this evening, we'll be discussing all the upcoming graduation and promotion ceremonies and asking trustees to sign up, to participate. It's hard to believe we're at that time of the year, but the school year is quickly escaping us. One other event of significance that I'd like to report on is that Thursday, May 31st, at 3:00 PM in the Sentinel High School cafeteria, we will recognize and honor those MCPS employees who are retiring at the conclusion of this school year. We have a number of veteran staff members who will be leaving us, and it's always a challenge to replace the institutional knowledge that they take with them, but I think it's appropriate that we all gather and celebrate their careers in the district. So Thursday, May 31st at 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Thanks. Then we move on to item D, which is any announcements from trustees. Are there any announcements? Trustee McConnell?
Hi. I've sent emails out to some of the people on the board, but for those who are sitting out there, I would just like to inform you that three of the Finance Academy students from Hellgate High School took first place on April 11th in the Montana Personal Finance Challenge. They have, they're out of 280 students throughout Montana, these three took first place, and that moves them on to the National Personal Finance Challenge in Lincoln, Nebraska, which, yeah, in Lincoln, Nebraska this Saturday. So if you know any of the students, give them a shout out and say congratulations and best of luck to them. Thank you.
Any other announcements from trustees? Trustee Beers?
So I wanted to thank the students at Hellgate and Ms. Zinke for hooking me up with a Superfly hoodie. So just quickly, I'm a little self-conscious, but there is a little knight on the back. So I'm almost to my goal. My wardrobe is almost exclusively MCPS swag, thanks to the Eagles Nest, the Big Sky. And the Vote Prep Program, actually as part of the Priets, collaboration with State Vote Rehab, is doing their screen printing. So the students are making these for the school and for the public, so I wanted to point that out. Also, in the theme of the evening, teacher appreciation, shout out to teachers. People, including teachers, come up to me and say, "Oh, my gosh, how could you do stand-up comedy? That's so intimidating, that's so awful." And I'm like, "Seriously? You do eight shows a day in front of an audience that doesn't really want to be there." So that's much harder than what I do. And special shout out to my mom, because I was raised by a teacher, and I think that's another level of cool that exists in the world, so, thanks.
Any other announcements from trustees? I have just one. If anyone has a couple of hours free either in the morning on May 24th or in the afternoon on May 24th, Big Sky High School is having their senior projects be judged by community volunteers. I try to do it every year, I've signed up again this year, but it really does take a community to let these students know how appreciated all the work they've done in creating their senior projects. So if anyone has a couple of hours free, I encourage you to go to the Big Sky High School website and sign up to judge morning, afternoon, or the whole day. And with that, we have one more under announcements, which is the district-wide ADA compliance update, and Hatton will give us that update about website compliance, I understand?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. I'll try and make this brief, but I alluded to this at our meeting at Seeley Swan High School, where the first reading of our new ADA digital compliance policy was read, and we wanted to give you a little bit of background and education about this effort. I'd also like to introduce Tracy Long, who's our superintendent's office specialist and also our district webmaster. She'll be participating in this brief presentation. So some quick history for you. In the 16-17 school year, we spent a lot of time understanding and researching the environment around digital accessibility, and understanding and researching what was being done by a variety of other public and private entities to achieve better accessibility with regard to their digital environment. That included sending Tracy to a training in the summer of 2017, and then we unveiled our year-long plan, which you're getting documentation about right now. So in September, the superintendent and I sent a long memo to all of our staff unveiling this plan and letting them know that we would be spending the year achieving digital compliance. And I want to give you the three main reasons why we've been through this effort this year, and recognize that even though Tracy and I have been doing a lot of work in the background, the real majority of this work has been done by our website directors at every school and our teaching faculty, who all have webpages, who are taking great care to make sure that the material they place on their webpages meets new accessibility design standards. So I want to recognize the work that they've already put in. So the first number-one why, it's why we do everything in our school district, is our students. And we recognize that we have students in our classrooms who have accessibility challenges. Those could be cognitive, they could be mobility challenges, they could be hearing, vision, or any other kind of disability that may create challenges for how they interact with information on our website. So we recognize that the reason we need to increase our sensitivity to that accessibility is number-one for our students, but we also recognize as a public-facing school district, our students have homework helpers, they have aunts and uncles, they have neighbors, they have grandparents, they have parents, who may also have accessibility challenges. So our big push in our training was to say, we can no longer rely on the students on our roster who may need service from an IEP or a 504 and require accommodations. We have to recognize that the baseline is that everybody should be able to access our content all the time. The second large reason why we have undertaken this year-long effort is because there had been, over the past five or so years, an uptick in complaints made by the Office of Civil Rights against private companies like Target, public institutions like the University of Montana, public K-12 school districts like the Montana School for the Deaf and Blind, Great Falls, several school districts down the Bitterroot, who have received complaints indicating that there's content on their website that is not accessible to individuals with disabilities. Originally, that process included a significant audit, as well as a remediation plan that wasn't always driven by the district. It was driven by a negotiation with the Office of Civil Rights. And those two processes were costing districts significant amounts of money, to the tune that some districts that were very small, small-class, C-size school districts, were even choosing to just shut down their web presence and say, "We can't deal with this, this is scary, and this is onerous." But Missoula County Public Schools believes in 21st century teaching and learning, and we did not want to lose our web presence. So we chose to, the superintendent and I and members of the cabinet chose to say, "Let's have a proactive plan. Let's not waste our scarce and very valuable dollars on an audit or remediation plan that we're not driving. Let's drive a proactive plan." So you're looking at that plan in front of you. And then the third reason why, actually doesn't have a ton to do with ADA accessibility, but it was a moment we needed to have a tune-up in terms of some of our web resources. In the past five years, I made a leadership decision to allow teaching faculty to host websites other than the platform that the school district provides. So those might be like a Weebly website, or a Wix website, or a Tumblr, or a variety of self-hosted platforms. The challenge is, over the past five years, we've experienced some problems with self-hosted websites, where there might be content that doesn't comply with board policy, or doesn't conform to certain ADA design standards, or creates Title IX problems. There have been a variety of issues. And we experienced enough, what I would say is human resources or legal time spent on those issues, that it's no longer worth it to the district to waste our time in those areas. And if there is information on a district-hosted website, the district needs to be able to correct it right away and have the ability to maintain and control that. So we have asked staff who- So we have asked staff who are hosting their websites in an area other than our district platform to bring that content home. We've also recognized that some staff have created that content over a number of years, so we don't expect them overnight to reinvent a website. We've asked them incrementally over time to move content into their new SchoolWires-hosted website, which is what you see on the screen. It's the company that hosts all of our webpages. So that's a little bit of the history and the reason why we've made this effort. I want to allow Tracy to give you a little background on the how and what we've done. And then we're going to show you some quick summary progress of where we've been this year and a really quick demonstration that we think is really cool.
Good evening, everybody. I think you all know me, I've been around for a while. I'm the nuts-and-bolts person that's kind of behind the scenes, but I, throughout this year, starting in August, have made trainings available to staff members, learning what needs to be done on their site to make it compliant. And there's five simple things that they have to do. It's labeling their apps and their pages correctly. It's using the developing tools within the platform itself with proper header structure and things of that nature. When they're not using the proper header structure, you would be using like .14 font, making it bold, saying that's your title. To us, that cited, it looks proper, but to somebody that's using assistive technology, it's not picking up that it's a header. So you have to use the tools within it. So it says, "This is heading one, this is heading two," things of that nature. Color contrast is another thing that we have to follow. Someone that has some low vision may have problems reading green on a yellow background or yellow on a green, things of that nature. Those things have to be called in. Links. Link structure is very important. We all see it, and you'll notice it now that you're more aware of it. "Click here for more information." That doesn't give anybody that's using assistive technology any kind of idea what they're clicking into. So you'd want to do something more descriptive, along the lines of, "Visit Google for more information," instead of "Click here for Google." It's just those little differences, and it's very small. Pictures. You have to make sure that everything's captioned correctly and that there's alternative text. So when you're uploading a photo, you know, when you pull things off of your camera and you upload it, it's that 123.jpg, 234.jpg. When someone's using assistive technology, that doesn't mean anything to them. So you have to make sure, "This is a picture of Tracy Long JPEG," so they understand what they're seeing. Throughout the school year, I have used my site directors and have been in the buildings, and we've done staff trainings. My most recent one was in Russell. The poor staff was in the middle of moving all these boxes, and within an hour, we managed to get all their pages up and running and on the right track. And they were so gracious, and they were polite, and they worked with one another and helped one another out. If someone was done, they moved forward. So is everybody working together to get this process there? I'm just a little helper in the back that kind of, "This is what we have to do." Any questions at all?
So Tracy is going to help me change what's on the screen right now, but we brought up this webpage because it's a clearinghouse of some videos, question-and-answer section, links to the state's plan to help all school districts achieve ADA compliance, as well as our district tips that go through those five tips that Tracy just discussed. So this is available to all our staff who want to do some self-paced learning, and we update this Q&amp;A section as our staff identify things which might be a challenge. We go and research them with our legal counsel, or we research them with the Rural Institute at University of Montana to find answers and add to that Q&amp;A section. So we're going to show you a quick summary spreadsheet of our progress this year. We've been in every school but two so far for meetings and trainings. I know the numbers are small, but we're just under 70% compliance in terms of, we've had two fidelity checks. One happened in January and one happened in April, to check and see where our staff was in our progress. So right now, in May, we are sitting at right around 68, 69%. And we know that in August, there are a couple buildings that we need to push into who, for a variety of reasons, were not able to participate in really focused training on this topic this, this school year. So that's our progress, and we feel pretty happy about that. I would have liked to be at 80% at this point in the year, but we're going to work with what we've got and make sure that we start the next school year. And what we say in our trainings is, "We are walking through this threshold together." Now that we understand the design standards that we need to conform to, the request is that staff address that and have sensitivity to that every time they place a digital resource online. So the next tab that Tracy's going to show, this is our MCPS staff newsletter. We publish this once a week. And the, what I want to demonstrate for you just very briefly, this is a tool called Read/Write for Google that we implemented in our district three years ago. So you can go ahead and pause that there. Thank you very much, Tracy. So this is one version of a screen reader. This happens to be a screen reader that we've implemented in our school district that works for a variety of supportive options for our students. So we just wanted to show you that because we're taking great care with everything we design to make sure it has that backend design structure in it, so that a screen reader, when it reads it, reads it in order and isn't jumping around the document and isn't getting to something that it doesn't understand, so that an individual who's listening to it doesn't have cognitive incongruence. That's everything we have for you. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain them. The second reading of that policy, I believe, will be on either the next May Board Agenda or the first one in June. So we just wanted to make sure that you had a little background behind that policy to see what we've been doing.
Any questions for Tracy and Hatton? Trustee Lauren?
Does the adaptive reader, is it provided by the MCPS website, or is it something the user has to procure?
So with Read/Write for Google, we purchase a certain number of licenses that can be granted to students. And I really want to mention Teresa McGary, who's in the audience today, who, without her, we would not have Read/Write for Google. She is an amazing occupational therapist who has just taken on the assistive technology torch and really brought that program to our district. So if you're going to use Read/Write for Google, Teresa and our special education team have a system for granting those licenses to students. All teachers can have a license for free, so I think if any of you signed up as a teacher, you could experience it for free as well, because you use your district email account. But what we learned is, some students who come into our school district already having learned certain accommodations for themselves, might bring a screen reader that they like the most. And that may be something that they're already using and they already have a license for, or it may be something that the Rural Institute has connected them with and gotten them a license for. So there are a variety of screen readers. This is just one example.
Any other questions for Tracy or Hatton? Trustee Beers?
So, two questions, and I'm going to sing your praises, because this is really cool. One, what kind of feedback have you gotten from student use? And the second would be, I love hearing about, and I'm learning constantly about description on visible things, so pictures, but then, what have you run across as far as audio description on video? Because I know that certain videos are embedded, but there's, you know, a lack there in technology. But, so those would be the questions. The feedback you've gotten so far, and then video, audio description.
So I would say, student feedback on what we're doing on the website, I haven't gotten at my level yet, and that's something that I want to get fine-grained detail on. We do have a disclaimer now that shows up on the bottom of every single webpage. Tracy, I'll scroll down and show you, that gives people an opportunity to contact us to say, "Hey, I found something on your website that I can't access. I have a challenge. Can you get me a different version of it?" We haven't had anybody contact us since we put that disclaimer, and it shows up on the bottom of every single page, no matter where you are. So I don't have a lot of student feedback for you yet. Teresa, if we were to give extra time, but I know we have a packed board meeting, would probably love to come back and give you student feedback about Read/Write for Google, and just how that's going and how that program is working. And then your second question with regard to audio, on, do you mean like a video that doesn't have its own soundtrack and having some audio description telling?
So, yeah, like, a lot of videos now have a narrator, like on top of like a voice, saying, you know, "This is visibly what's happening on the screen." So it's the, you know, we're all, most people are familiar with closed caption, so if you can't hear something, you can read what's going on, but for someone that is visibly impaired, you know, a description of what's happening on the screen.
Yeah. I think you are great at identifying our next frontier of challenge and that level of, so we are giving our schools and our teachers resources for where to get videos and content transcribed really quickly through digital resources, so that we can make sure we have closed captions on everything. We haven't gotten to that level of an audio description that's embedded in to describe what's happening on the screen if, if you're not at a point where there's dialogue in the video.
Absolutely. So I would just close in saying, this is, this is wonderful. Not a lot of, you know, people are familiar with different adaptive technologies, and understanding that it is a conversation. So adaptive technologies evolve as fast as the technologies that they're used in. So to say, "Okay, we have it done, like it's perfect now, and it'll last forever," is a fallacy. It's an ongoing conversation, and the idea that the district is, is being this proactive and reactive to those technologies and the individuals that use them to, you know, just to hear, you know, Hatton and Tracy say, "This is technology that we use to address this disability, but we are aware that each individual is, is just that, an individual. So if you have a technology or an adaptation that works best for you, you know, we are going to, you know, use that, allow you to use that, because that's what you use," is phenomenal. I think technology and disability, you know, without nerding out too much, is an interesting conversation, because it's technology that's developed for people to, with different disabilities to access the technology that exists. But then it's also, there's a rich history of technology that is developed either for or by people with disabilities to access the environment that already does. So disability itself is never the absence of goals. It's simply the recognition that, in order to achieve the same thing, I'm going to find a new way. And not a lot of people know, like, day-to-day, from the curb cut in the sidewalk to the speech to text that you now use on your phone daily, those are all things that are developed with disability in mind. And, you know, this is a perfect example of, you know, this is, you know, the, this is something that was made to, and technology is something that is made to address the least capable among us, but used correctly and implemented correctly, it makes the entire world a better place. So the website is not just better for, you know, somebody that is visually impaired, it is now easier for everybody to navigate. And I think it's just a cool conversation to have, and I give a lot of credit to Hatton and Tracy and the entire team, because I know it takes a lot of people. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other trustee comments or questions? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none. Well, thanks, Tracy. Thanks, Hatton. Thanks to everyone for all this hard work. I had to go through this training at UVM campus, and it's really eye-opening to be able to understand how adaptive, anyway, thank you so much. And I think now we're on to 9A1, which is an update on K-12, K-12 English Language Arts Program. And so Dr. Guest, it looks like you're going to be the primary speaker, but I think you have a team with you.
I have a fabulous team with me. So I'm so excited to be here. I think that this presentation has been a long time in coming, and it's really exciting to share this work and talk about the learning journey we've been on in the last two years. As an old high school English teacher, special ed teacher, all the way into this position, I'm really humbled by the teachers who are all a part of this work and the knowledge and the expertise they brought to this work. And so that's why we have a wide variety of stakeholders that are part of the process that are actually going to speak to you, not only about the process, but the recommendations and the why around the recommendations. And some things that, to underscore this is, we're excited about how transparent this has been and how we've tried to include as many people as possible. Lots of eyes have been on this. Many people have been involved with it at the task force level, as well as with the professional development that happened during the job-embedded days. And the ultimate results are a process that we're very proud of, that we feel is very thorough, that is based on research and current best practices, and that ultimately will build off of the great things that are currently happening and continue to help refine our efforts with that growth mindset and that opportunity to have curiosity about our practice as educators and meeting all of the learning needs of our kids. So it's really exciting. And ultimately, we know that all of this is grounded on our 21st century mission and vision statement. And I highlight for you something that just really resonates in my heart and in all the work that we do out of teaching and learning, in that notion of uncompromising excellence and empowering all learners. And we think about that word learner, we're not just always talking about our students. Our students obviously come first, and we're definitely speaking to all of our children, our children who are on IEPs and who have special learning needs, our children who are English language learners, our children who will continue to grow and love to read. But we're also speaking to us as adults and how we come together in a collaborative forum to continue to feed off of each other's expertise and knowledge and learn how we can best meet all of the learning needs of our children. And so this vision really grounds our work and really sets the tone and the foundation for everything that you're going to hear about today. The second thing that really hits and grounds, whoopsies, grounds our work. Oh, Hatton told me, "Be careful with the clicker." Oh, nuts. Oh, dear. Get me back on track. Oh, dear.
You're going the wrong way.
I'm going the wrong way. I started to get excited. I was on a roll. Thank you. What I get excited about in this slide is that there's research behind taking an initiative, whatever we're doing, and doing so within a multi-year, five-to-seven-year process, in which curriculum development is dynamic. It's not static. It doesn't happen in one year per the Office of Public Instruction, and we just have it one year. We look at our curriculum, and then we don't look at it again for five years. But rather, there's really strong research that's been embedded with a lot of our systems already, in which we really talk about, "We should do this. We know that this is best for kids, so how do we do it, and how do we do it the best way possible? How do we build those curriculum components?" And we continue to build off of those. And so ultimately, this work started last year, which you're going to hear about, and how we've built those curriculum components, and how this year, with the recommendation of the materials, is an opportunity to build on that. And we'll continue the work next year, and next year, as we continue with this learning journey. We learn what's worked, what hasn't worked, what we need to tweak to better meet our needs in our community here at MCPS. And that ultimately, it is because of the voice and the, and the actions of all of the teachers coming together and that collaborative way to really inform all of this work. And so ultimately, that's what we're here to share with you tonight. And I'm going to pass it off to Robin, and I'll let each task force member present themselves as we go through our slides tonight. I thank you for your attention. I know there's been a lot of questions, there's been a lot of statements made, and I hope that we help to answer some of those questions, provide some insight, and then honestly, help you in any way so that you feel like you have the questions answered that you need. So with that, thank you.
So I'm Robin Nettle. I'm an instructional coach in the district. And this, as Dr. Guest referred to, this began two years ago, with an audit team that went out to each of the schools and had a dialogue with teachers in the building about what they were currently using for their core English Language Arts materials. So if you notice in the first slide here, here we go. Go back. So notice up here, this is, this is the data that we got back from our kindergarten teams. So we have nine elementaries, and up there you'll see that there are six different reading and writing and phonics programs that are listed. There's also NA listed, meaning that they couldn't identify a program that's currently being used in their building consistently. So when you see the larger gap in there, that means that more than one school reported that. When you go to the upper elementaries in fifth grade, for instance, you can see that we have a few less programs that are being used, but there's still an NA, and there's still a variety of things being used across the district. When we had dialogue with teachers about this, they said that really what was happening as they were spending so much time creating their own materials, that they weren't as able to be as responsive- that they weren't as able to be as responsive to student need. And so that's why we came back together this year, to really find a way to provide some of that consistency so that we can spend our time as educators responding to how students have done and where they're struggling. In our middle schools, we have four programs. Going to remind you, we only have three middle schools. Up there, you'll also notice that one of the programs currently being used by some of our middle schools was Engage New York. So there was already a little bit of experimentation happening out there in our six through eight community with the Engage New York materials. And in fact, today, when we brought our sixth grade teachers together to do their final data-driven dialogue, I looked around the room at the assessments they had brought and every single one of them had picked something out of Engage New York without any dialogue from us. So they identified that that's the assessment that they wanted to use and they brought back. At our high school level, you'll notice that we were completely agreement that everyone was using novel studies. However, when asked how effective it was in meeting student needs on a scale from zero to five, you can see we had some schools reporting a five, that it was effective, and some schools reporting that it was a two for its effectiveness. So we still, even though we're consistent that we're using the same concept, we weren't consistent in our belief about whether or not it was effective in meeting the needs of all learners.
I'm Sarah Skarston. I was a member of the task force and I am a seventh grade teacher at Meadow Hill. I was fortunate to be able to serve on all of the task forces throughout this process, starting with the STAR 360, moving into Priority Standards and now as part of the K-12 Task Force. And so after the audit of current practice, we began to develop some foundational curriculum components. Bingo. Thank you. So the first big idea in a professional learning community is that we are committed to helping all students acquire the same essential knowledge and skills regardless of the teacher to whom they are assigned. And in order to address that big idea, educators in a PLC address the first question, which is, what do we want students to learn? The only way to truly have a guaranteed curriculum is if the teachers themselves work collaboratively to study the intended curriculum and then agree on priorities within the curriculum. So in this step of the process, teachers met with their grade level teams in their own buildings to determine what skills, what standards were absolutely critical to student success. This was all teachers across the district involved in this process. Then the Priority Standards Task Force, which I was a member of, comprised of teachers from various grades from all over the district, narrowed these down even further. We did this by looking critically at each standard, determined if it had endurance, leverage, and also developed student skills and readiness for the next level of learning. So we were able to narrow down the average of forty standards per grade level to priority standards of about ten to fifteen per grade level. Once we determined those, we began to ask ourselves the next question of a PLC. How do we know students have learned it? This question is critical to ensuring that the guaranteed curriculum is not only being taught to students, but more importantly, that students are actually learning it. This took us to the next step, clarifying how the curriculum translates into student knowledge and skills through the building of proficiency scales. Proficiency scales in simplest terms represent a progression of learning goals with three levels of difficulty. The target content, simpler content, and also the more complex content. Through presentations by Dr. Guest and the coaches in the Teaching and Learning Department, teachers learned how to use these scales provided, and provided a plan for what students will need to know and be tested on throughout the year. At the same time that this was going on, the entire district initiated the STAR 360 universal screeners across the district. So the next step in our timeline was to provide some professional development for grade level ELA teachers to come together on a district level to conduct PLC work. So we used the proficiency scales that were created to plan for district-wide student success. Through the professional development that was outlined here on this slide, we first analyzed student data to assess our current reality of student knowledge and skill. Then we dug into and learned how to use the proficiency scales that were developed. Using those scales, we attempted to analyze student work samples for common standards that we agreed upon assessing beforehand. But we kept running into a problem of practice. In fact, we ran into this today in our seventh grade meeting. The stumbling block that came up every time was not having common materials to teach from and assess with. The adult action that we continually agreed would address this problem was having general pacing guides for delivering the curriculum as well as common curriculum materials to support a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So all of this work kept coming back to that critical purpose of ensuring that students have access to a guaranteed and viable curriculum. It's important to note the difference between these two. The fact that the curriculum is guaranteed assures that specific content is taught in specific courses and at specific grade levels regardless of the teacher to whom the student is assigned. That does not mean that teachers are teaching the exact same lesson on the exact same day in the exact same way. The fact that the curriculum is viable indicates that there's enough instructional time available to actually teach the prioritized content. Once the work of the Prioritized Standards Task Force was complete, it became absolutely clear that we needed to move on to determine what curricular materials would help us achieve this goal and drive our curriculum in the right direction.
Hi, my name is Elise Myers. I'm a teacher at Chief Charlo. So once we had our task force come together, we were given two objectives. The first was as we put on our district hats, not as a second grade teacher, as a Chief Charlo teacher, as an MCPS teacher, we went and covered our core beliefs around literacy, which Sarah just talked about, that we needed something that all students had access to no matter where they were, what school or what teacher they had. And at the end, we were asked to recommend two programs to support what we wanted. Near our end of our time together, we created an implementation plan for the following school year, eighteen nineteen. So we had fifty-six total hours together. We were also given the opportunity to come in after hours and get paid for it to review curriculum that we altogether would look at, but we could go in one on our own and look at it too. We also were able to look at EdReports, which you will hear more about later. But Ed Reports is a totally third-party company that is not, it doesn't have any buy-in for any of the curriculum. It's research-based. It tells us exactly what we need to know. And through all of this, as you will see on the back, all of those papers, we had constant consensus building. We did not take any steps forward without voting as a team. And it was all on our own account, on our own, what we believed about with our district hat on and what we knew about our curriculum. So on here, you will see a list of all of our elementary task force members. We had a range from kindergarten at Russell all the way to fifth grade, a few fifth grade teachers. We had two administrators, some special ed, and then obviously Elise and some of the coaches. On the next slide as well, you will see middle and high school teachers. Now, it's not shown, or there is some, I guess. There are ELA teachers on there and there's also special ed, even though it's not separated the way it was in elementary. And so what I also have for you is a, oh, one more piece, sorry. On the elementary and middle school, it was really important, we saw too, that our elementary students were prepared for going into middle school. So we talked about, a lot about that vertical collaboration, that we needed our fifth graders to be ready for what they're going to get in sixth grade and not have a huge disconnect when they show up. So then on our next one, we put together a video on one of our last days, kind of showing you everything we're telling you tonight in a very suffice way, but just to get a view of the teachers that were a part of it and to hear our own voices, the people who couldn't be here tonight.
I'm really excited to share with you some recent work that's come out of the task force that is kindergarten, grade twelve for English Language Arts. So for forty hours, this task force has really dug into research and best practice and completed a very thorough process that I'm very proud about. The result is that we've identified and recommended some resources that are truly research-based and will support and enhance the great teaching that happens in our classrooms every day and thus truly improve our student achievement. And with that, I'm really excited for you to hear from some of our task force members about the process and the work that was completed. Thank you for your interest and we look forward to working with you in eighteen nineteen school year as we begin to implement some of these resources.
We spent the entire first day defining high-quality literacy instruction, research success that all students receive for core curriculum, effective, engaging, research and evidence-based instructional strategies.
The ELA task force went through a very structured process, reading, research and having discussions on what constitutes best practice in literacy instruction. We listed what we felt was essential in a purchase program and what we'd like to have. Must haves were instructional guidelines in literacy learning, high-density reading and writing instruction, scaffold instruction, self-directed learning and student choice. A program would need a language granular component, quality assessment, speaking and listening components, exempt bars especially in eighth through twelve, multiple ways of accessing text, built-in differentiation cognitive developmental stages, and implementation of high-impact strategies. From there, we went on to analyze eight reading programs to narrow it down to two choices that we thought would best meet the needs of our district and best practices.
Here's some facts that make up MCPS as a whole. One thousand four hundred and sixty-seven students qualify for free lunch. One hundred and seventy-five qualify for reduced lunch. One thousand three hundred and eight are on IEP and a hundred and twenty-seven are ELL students. On our first day, we did a K-12 ELA data dialogue on ACT, SBAH and STAR data. Here were some of the findings. In two thousand seventeen, only fifty percent of students reached benchmark on the ACT. On SBAH grades three through eight were all, were below or at sixty percent proficient. And from the false STAR data, we were not in the eighty percent proficient pyramid, grades K through five.
We also sought through a literacy audit of K-12 that there are five to eight materials being taught for tier one.
To begin a process, we utilized EdReports.org. EdReports.org is an independent nonprofit organization that utilizes high-quality rigorous evaluations of curricular programs.
Ed Reports evaluates through three different gateways and we only looked at programs that had passed all three. Text quality, building knowledge and usability.
After vetting programs through Ed Reports, we identified additional criteria that was important to MCPS.
After closing a wide variety of materials and hearing presentations from multiple vendors, we used a highly technological system of sticky notes, dots and poster paper.
We narrowed our options down to two, which includes K through five, six through eight and nine through twelve.
As the district moves through an implementation, the teachers will need specific types of support. In order for teachers to be prepared, we identified components to play successful rollout for each program.
There are four phases in this implementation process. In each phase, we identify student needs, teacher needs, administration needs, technology needs, and any other needs that might be necessary for success.
Good evening. I am BJ Edie from CS Porter Middle School. I am a sixth grade English Language Arts teacher. So what we looked at in our grounding research were some art and science of teaching by Marzano, leading with focus with Schmoker. And we really looked at that so we could make sure we had a good idea of what effective instruction was going to look like. And looking at what Marzano says is seventy-five percent of what we teach is a science. It's observable. It's quantifiable. It's the pedagogy we have, the engaging strategies we use, all of that type of things that you can observe. The next part of that though, is what makes teaching the fun part. It's the art of teaching. It's that thing you can't necessarily teach in our teacher schools. It comes with experience. It comes with putting forth that effort and developing those relationships. So regardless of what we're teaching, we make it engaging to the students. And we take where they are and get them where they need to be. We then listed what was important for MCPS on high-quality core literacy instruction. Some of those, because I'm not going to read a PowerPoint, is common assessments, intentional schedule structure, so we had whole group, we had small group, reading and writing daily across all genres and all types, and then effective, engaging, research-based, evidence-based practices. We then looked at our current data reality. Where are we? And what we saw were fifty-seven percent of our students were college-ready in English. Forty-five percent of our students were college-ready in reading. Now that's better than the state average. But we need to keep our students competitive nationwide and that gap is closer nationwide. And we want to produce students at MCPS that aren't just competitive in-state, that are competitive nationally. Looking at our SBAH scores, we had between fifty-five percent and sixty-three percent of third and eighth graders scoring proficient in the English part of the assessment. And then looking at our STAR scores, grade second through ninth, we aren't, fourteen out of fifteen of us are not eating, not meeting the eighty percent proficiency, proficiency goal that you would expect with a strong core curriculum.
I'm Lindsay Morris. I am currently a new teacher instructional coach. But before I was at CS Porter, BJ took my job and I was on the Priority Standards Task Force. So I've been in this for two years.
And my name is Jenna Briggs and I'm an instructional coach for teaching and learning.
First, I want to talk about, you mentioned, or we mentioned earlier, the Ed Reports. It's a third-party program or system that actually hires teachers throughout the United States to dig into curriculum. They have nothing to do with the curriculum companies. They don't get paid by anybody but Ed Reports. They dig through the curriculum and they go through three gateways. And the gateways are text quality, building knowledge and usability. If a program does not go through the first gateway and does not pass, like you see right here in the red zone, they don't even waste their time going on to the next two quality, or the next two gateways because it's not up to par. And as of right now, in elementary K through five, we are using Reading Street that scores all red. And this is easy, our Reading Street Common Core, which maybe, maybe one to two of our schools might have. Our Reading Street from two thousand eighteen is actually not pre-common core. So our, the common core that's up to date is actually scoring all reds and not even passing to the second or third gateway. And literacy by design, that is also another one because you guys adopted in two thousand eight two curriculums and that one hasn't even ever been reviewed. So what we did is we dug through Ed Reports and we came down, the K through five came down to these programs. We wanted to dig more into American Reading Company, Core Knowledge Language Arts. Lucy Colkins was not actually addressed in Ed Reports, but everybody throughout the districts have pieces of using it, so we wanted to dig more into it. Ready Gen, Ready Gen, Wonders, Wit and Wisdom, and then Engage New York. And Engage New York is an open source, so we dug into that piece by piece by piece.
So as Lindsay stated, we had vendors come from seven companies to talk to the elementary task force. And what we did after they presented was start to collect data around the strengths of programs and the challenges. You can see on, on the slide as well as some of the artifacts. And we just charted afterwards as a group, what do you see as strengths of this program? And if we were looked, to look at it, what are the challenges of this program? And ultimately, in round one, people were able to just vote, yes, a green dot, I'd like to hear more about this program, or red, a no dot, I'm done hearing about it. So that was kind of round one of scoring. From there, we dug into the programs further, spent some more time in them independently and our task was to go from seven programs down to three. So round two of the voting is represented in the slides up above. And what we asked task members to do was to go ahead and vote a number one, being this is the program I'm most confident in, number two, I can support this program as my second choice and my third choice as well. And from that, we took, numerically just took the totals and narrowed it down to three programs. If you look at those slides right away, does anything stand out to you on those two initial slides? There's only three ones, right. So there's not, there's not a lot of ones on the two that we're representing right here. And at this point, we had gone from seven programs down to three. It was American Reading Company, Ready Gen, and a third program called Wit- It was American Reading Company, Ready Gen, and a third program called Wit and Wisdom. And Wit and Wisdom is a new nonprofit program that teachers were really interested in. And at the second checkpoint, it held the most number ones. From there, we moved to our third day of scoring and evaluating curriculum. So if you remember from Elisa's part in the beginning, the task members were asked to support two programs ultimately. So what we did was each task member spent another half-day digging through videos from representatives, vendor materials, teaching videos that we saw from other schools that were putting their materials up. And they were able to ask questions and dig in as a group and ultimately, no longer voting one and two, but just saying, these are two programs I can support. They were given two sticky notes and asked to present, or to represent the two programs that they could ultimately stand behind. And we had American Reading Company and Ready Gen as the two products. Wit and Wisdom, if you remember, was first in the second round. And what happened there was ultimately a conversation around, number one, it's a small nonprofit and we weren't sure if they could quite service a district this big in the timeframe that we needed. There was also a lot of concern around leveled libraries, so teachers being able to do whole group and small group instruction. And the schools that had materials already would be set as far as leveled libraries to do reading groups, but schools that did not, the materials would not be coming and instantly they would already be at a deficit from the other groups. So ultimately, the tide shifted and we had Ready Gen and American Reading Company come up on top. We were also lucky to have teachers come from each of those companies and present at Chief Charlo. So we had a representative in first grade and fifth grade, and we had the committee come up and actually see classrooms being taught by teachers from their company and then were able to give feedback after those two recommendations. So ultimately, when we look at these two programs, our two recommendations from the committee, Ready Gen and American Reading Company both score all green on all three gateways of Ed reports. So if you remember from Lindsay's piece, our current, our current program scores red on the initial one and doesn't even pass the other two. So to find two programs that score all green is really impressive in ELA curriculum. If you notice on the scores, it's pretty tiny, but there are some points missing in the subsets. And even though the category is green, we went all the way down to the micro level looking at the products. And in Ready Gen, in third through fifth grade, they lost partial points on comprehension scores. And in American Reading Company, kindergarten through second grade, they lost partial points just on phonics. So we had to take two great programs and just keep digging in to really understand what, how to support them as we roll them out. Ultimately, what we did was took the two recommendations of American Reading Company and Ready Gen, and it went from the teacher task force hands to the administrator hands. So the administrators were tasked with, the reality is that the task force was not like budgeting and how much the programs cost. They were tasked with the timeline and materials of what could be supported and actually rolled out to teachers. And the following slide is what we present as a recommendation. So this represents what all schools would be doing as one complete program, but with three distinct components. The bottom piece is Ready Gen, which is the program we talked about in the last few slides. That gives us an integrated approach to reading and writing. It gives us all of the shifts of common core. So many programs like the one, like Reading Street that we looked at on the first slide were built before common core. But Ready Gen represents the shifts of close reading, authentic texts, more informational pieces for students to be represented in the newer, the newer ELA curriculum. So the green again is materials. The blue portion of the circle represents instructional delivery. So this is Daily Five, which is a framework that has been around for about ten years and teachers really respond well to it. It's a balance of small group and whole group. It really heavily emphasizes student choice and student drive and what they're learning. And that will be developed through summer P, or rolled out through summer PD that's optional for teachers. So we've got materials and then we've got a framework. And the yellow piece represents the last piece of the pie, which is called the ERLA. And even though that feels like a new acronym, that's actually the assessment portion out of American Reading Company, which was the second recommended choice. So the ERLA allows us to do diagnostic informative assessments. So we're able to take students to learn about their reading behaviors and then as teachers better define what the next step is for them. So those three pieces together represent our recommendation for the K-5 curriculum.
I'm Brittany Kileman and I am a new teacher instructional coach. So the middle school and high school materials, we went through the same process as the elementary did. We identified six programs: Amplify My Perspective, Study Sync, Wit and Wisdom, and the American Reading Company, as well as Engage New York. And we used Ed reports as well to ensure the highest quality. ARC actually was not reviewed by Ed reports, but because the K-5 was reviewing them and they got such high scores in ARC, or in Ed reports in the K-5 level, we kept that on the table just to see if we wanted to go with that K-8 curriculum continuum. Publisher presentations happened for five, and then Engage New York being that open source, we had to just dig deep in and see how our priority standards aligned out inside that program. So, same thing, we used our high-tech sticky notes and pros and cons. So after each presentation would finish, the task force six through twelve would sit down and talk out what they liked, what they thought could improve, and then ultimately decided if they wanted to learn more, if they were kind of done with learning on those programs. So we narrowed it down at that point, going through and doing our pros and cons and voting yeses and nos, to our four, four for middle school. And we, that was in March, so we, you know, went with the theme March Madness. And high school was able to narrow it down to two that they were most interested at that point. So then, what we did was we took an additional day to go through those, all four in middle school, and to really delve in at high school into the two that they liked most, and just dig into the materials and go through everything and hash it out and talk to each other and collaborate on what we thought was the biggest strengths and where the two that, that the task force could choose for both levels six, eight, and nine, twelve, that they could both say they supported on, on those. And so it came down to, in middle school, they narrowed down to Wit and Wisdom and Engage New York. And in high school, they came to Engage New York and Study Sync. So Wit and Wisdom, we, the one kind of con of it was it had a really extensive homework piece that we felt we didn't have a long enough English Language Arts block in school and that that would be kind of taxing to our community to have that much homework in the evening. Study Sync in the high school was a very structured paced program, and the high school teachers said that they would be more comfortable with more flexibility. So across K, or six through twelve, we landed on Engage New York.
So if we go back and we look at Ed reports for Engage New York, you'll notice up there for six through eight, it's green all the way across. And it's actually green on all three of those gateways. Engage New York at the six through eight is based off of Expeditionary Learning, which is predominantly used by a lot of our writing coaches. And it's also got some protocols and things built in that CS Porter has been using for a lot of years. The nine through twelve is a little bit different. Engage New York hasn't been evaluated in its entirety by Ed reports, however, it is have, or it does, excuse me, have a component of Odell built into it. And Odell has been rated green across all four gateways, three gateways, excuse me. And then when you dig in closer, what you'll see is how it scored. So notice that little green bar goes out almost to the end. And so the one point that kept Engage New York from being a perfect score was a little bit of structure around grammar and vocabulary. And so the team has a plan for how to move forward to make sure that we embed some of that grammar practice into our warm-ups and into our writing assessments.
My name is Jody and I'm an instructional coach for Teaching and Learning. There's a lot of information out there as to teachers that are using this system, Engage New York at the high school level. And it is, you know, there are thoughtful samples of literary text and literary nonfiction. Teachers have the option, it's not a canned program. You look at it, it looks like it could be scripted, but it's an option of how fast you can pace if you want to pace it and slow it down for students to really focus on the reading closely. You can do that, or if you need to speed it up, you can have those lessons and you can combine some things. Materials are detailed, but it's up to the teacher, it's voluntary to see how closely you want to follow that script, or you can, you know, again, speed it up however you need to. And then the materials are identified with assessed standards and addressed standards. And it does match the MCPS priority standards that we have identified. People that are using it are states that have adopted the common core standards and other standards that are equivalent. So it's not just as, when you hear Engage New York, it's not just, it started in New York, but if you go into the research that's around it, forty-two states are using Engage New York. It's one of the most hit identified curriculum support materials out there. So it's, it's widely used. And it identifies and it gives kids opportunity to read nonfiction, and it's very sufficient in the grade level complexity and range of vocabulary, the collaboration that allows to go across content areas is very flexible for teachers to be able to access. The scaffolding that comes with, as recommendations, the very traditional recommendations of scaffolding, you know, front-loading with vocabulary, summarizing the text, going through and making predictions before students read the text, building backgrounds so that they have the information that's related to the text. Or there's a, an example, there's lots of protocols that are throughout the text. And when we meet with the high school ELA teachers, we're going to match up some of those protocols that can be well-used in the classroom, but one is called release and catch and release. And so it's let the kids explore the material, experience it a little bit, bring them back, answer some questions that they may have, and then release that information and let them explore with that material.
I'm Ally McFarland. I teach eighth-grade English at CS Porter, and I've been a member of the task force for two years. So the first year developing priority standards and this year adopting, reviewing curriculum materials. To link the work of the task force over both years, we then checked to ensure that the common core standards that MCPS teachers prioritize at each grade level during that two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen PLC work would be met through the curriculum materials. The middle school team cross-referenced these standards throughout the Engage New York modules and recommended which modules to use to begin a viable year-long implementation. The high school team highlighted the standards met in module one to ensure a match to MCPS priority standards. Next, we identified novels and novel sets we currently have in the district. This list can be compared to Engage New York's required text list to take advantage of existing materials while compiling the purchase order of additional Engage New York novels. Finally, teams identified six common assessments per grade level with some to be discussed in a data-driven dialogue as a district and others to be monitored in grade level and building PLCs. The lessons in between might be refined by PLCs to meet individual needs of students. We are using this, excuse me, the same text, same sequence, same standards, and common assessments within the same module, but the art is when we refine a lesson or pace to meet the diverse student needs within individual classrooms. When estimating the amount of time dedicated to each module throughout the school year, the middle school team also built in extra days for the very purpose of enhancing or reteaching lessons when necessary.
Sorry. Ultimately, I first want to just show my appreciation for the task force. Clearly, our teachers are knowledgeable and they're experts and they've shared a really thorough research-based process. At the beginning of this presentation, I talked to you about that scaling up research that talks to us about how to implement an initiative and to do so in a way that is sustainable. And part of that research includes this formula. And the formula is something that guides our work out of teaching and learning in every PLC. First, we have to have effective practice. We know that there's some areas that need improvement. We're doing wonderful things, but there's always opportunity for improvement. So practice comes in the opportunity to learn together, together, for teachers to give input on their experience and for us to make the best decisions for our kids and their learning needs. That's the practice. It's an opportunity for us to come as collaborators, to be curious together, to share our expertise, and to really help each other so that we can truly meet the needs of all of our learners. That all means all. The second part is implementation. We have to have a level of a system of integrity, whether it's around common materials, so that we as teachers can talk about our practice with some common language and some common assessments, so that we're truly able to talk to each other. You heard from one of the task force members that often in our data-driven dialogue, that the problem of practice is that we didn't have a consistent common material from which to build off of and discuss and work with. And lastly, the notion of a context. We need to have the context in which we are all coming together and wanting to learn, that we have the resources and the time through job embedded professional development, through PLC time at the site-based schools, and then a chance for us at all these different levels to truly have that context that enables us to come together in that collaborative way, to use these materials to refine our practice and ultimately meet the needs of our kids. If we times all of those three variables together, the outcome is improved student outcomes. But if we have a zero in any of those areas, if we have a zero with a practice, or a zero with the implementation, a zero with a common material, we will have a zero outcome. And so we know in our multiplication, zero times something is a zero. And what we're ultimately trying to do from teaching and learning is to create the systems from which we can really capitalize on the knowledge and expertise amongst us and continue to refine our practice within that collaborative model. And so with that, this has been a really long presentation, but I told Mark that we wanted all the time in the world to make sure to honor this hard work that's been happening over the last two years, to help answer to any questions that you may have, and to make sure that you're truly informed about this great work, because it's certainly something that we all are clearly very proud of and committed to. And I think it speaks to the beauty of MCPS and what we're trying to achieve altogether. So with that, I guess we open it up for questions and we've invited task force members to just continually answer them as you, as you need.
Okay. And so it's information only, so any questions or comments? Trustee Smith?
Wow. Where do I start? First, I'm going to start with thanking all the teachers, everyone on the staff, and everyone, not just because it's Teacher Appreciation Week, but because we really do appreciate everything that you do all the time. But also thank you to this, the group that worked on this. This is no small endeavor, certainly, and I really appreciate the comprehensive way that you presented it. It gave me, it actually answered a lot of the questions that I had in hearing and also in the, in the backup materials you gave us before. I know that there was a lot of concern, and a term that I heard thrown out an awful lot, or several terms, were the term canned, the term scripted, and I think, lack of adaptability or something to that effect. What I'm seeing and what I'm hearing from you guys, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, in both the Engage New York stuff and what you guys are saying, is that I, I don't see, I think canned is, is a term that is being used, it's a label that I don't think is, is fair, at least from what I'm hearing here. The, the canned, to me, is kind of a way to throw shade on a, on a, on something that we maybe don't know enough about. My question is, I see in here, and I hear a little bit about teachers, it said, let's see if I can find my notes here, lessons might be refined by PLCs. I know that there were options in here for teaching plans, and I heard mentioned that not every teacher's going to teach everything every day. That, to me, indicates that there is some flexibility. Now, I just said that we have wonderful teachers, and I know we have wonderful teachers. Are they, do they really have that flexibility where, and, and as Mike hinted before, what you guys do is rocket science compared to anything I would ever be able to do. But do they really have that flexibility? How is that built into the system, I guess is my, is my, my question. And I, I think I heard little bits and pieces of it, but I'd like a little bit more on what one teacher in a classroom or a school could do.
I think everyone's super excited to answer my question.
BJ, you win.
Yeah. So I am one of the teachers who is currently teaching Engage New York. We're working through, due to our current pacing of what novel it would be, we're doing the first module. We are going to be on tight, tight on some things. That's why we created the three common assessments across district. Those are the things we're going to be tight on. We need to have these. So when we get together, as Robin said, like we did today in our sixth-grade ELA PLC, we can have meaningful collaboration about what's going on in our classrooms, because I'll tell you, today was phenomenal. And I'll be the first one to say, I wasn't always the biggest fan of some of those, but it's hard when you're comparing apples and oranges. Today, we all had apples, and that was phenomenal. But every single day, I find flexibility in the lessons I'm teaching. Every single day. We did a hero's journey. They used Hobbit and Wizard of Oz. That has much, about as much relatability with sixth graders as you can imagine in a nineteen-sixties movie. You know what does have relatability? Superheroes. You know what does have relatability? Superheroes. They follow the same journey. That's flexibility. Yes, there's a script. It's off to the side, very small, written option. And then I get to use my art that I talked about earlier, my craft, my relationships I've built with my kids, to engage them in these lessons that my peers are also teaching in their own way to meet their students' needs. And so there is that flexibility with allowing that tightness of those common assessments and being in the same place.
Awesome. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Any other questions? Trustee Deck?
Okay, thanks. This is an enormous topic and obviously has generated a lot of interest in both MCPS community and in the broader community. And I feel like as board members, we're put in a bit of an unenviable position in that we need to make a decision about something over which none of us are experts, which means that we need to really rely on the input of the experts. And the input, to me, feels quite mixed at this point. I really appreciate all the work of this committee. The feedback so far seems very unanimous at the elementary level. And the problems, as stated in the data that you showed, seemed much more clear at the elementary level at this point. I could be wrong about that. But it looks like there was a lot more difference in what was being implemented across schools as well as the STAR 360 data and the Sback data showed some pretty significant challenges from the elementary level. But we're hearing some really different things at the high school level. And so I wonder if you could talk a little bit to the adoption K-12 versus the adoption in the places where there seems to be a little more enthusiasm for it, first of all. And this is my second question, if I can ask two, is sort of a follow-up to what Mike asked about and what BJ commented on, which is, I also know that when you are implementing a program, fidelity is an important piece. And will teachers be evaluated on their, their use of... I mean, it's one thing to say, yes, there's flexibility, but at what point does flexible implementation and teacher's creativity become you're no longer implementing with fidelity? And what, in fact, are teachers going to be evaluated on? I think that's where some of the concern may be coming from, when we're, when we're looking at something and saying, oh, there's a script, but it's, but really, we can still be flexible. Some people hear that and say, okay, great. And some people hear that and say, yeah, but where's the, where's push gonna come to shove? So those are my two questions.
They passed the buck on that one. I think you bring up a couple important points. First of all, our craft as teachers, I, it's concerning when then it gets connected to an evaluation like what you just mentioned. What we're hoping to do is bring each other together in an opportunity with a common material to talk about our craft. And, for example, for the high school, the invitation is to come together and to teach Module One together. And let's be on that learning journey together, and let's learn together. Let's learn when Lesson Three to Five can be smushed together into one day. Let's learn when we come together with a common formative assessment, which is something we're all asking for across our system so that we can look and see where our kids are achieving and where we need to flex and be nimble and respond to their needs. And the way we do so is by coming together in that collaborative way. So it's not about being evaluative at all. It's about coming together and sharing in our expertise and doing so in a way that improves our practice across the entire district. So no matter what high school you go to, what teacher you get, what your experience is, you are still guaranteed that opportunity for learning. And so the option that we're really excited about is to invite PLCs to come together with teaching and learning support. We'll make sure to provide all the resources because we've heard often that out of a PLC, they can't really collaborate because they're not all sharing in the same novel at the same time because of a lack of resources. So let's make sure our teachers have the right resources in their hands so that when they do come together, they can inform that work of the module. And as we refine our practice and understand more about Engage New York, so will our implementation of it so that we create that guaranteed and viable curriculum that's been multiple years. That comes back down to that research that says this, this is not a one-and-done and we won't revisit it in five years. This is multiple years of refining our practice and being informed. And as we become more sophisticated, so will the implementation. And so absolutely not. There's no evaluative measure to it. And I would certainly look to my colleagues in HR to affirm that. And I think our message has always been that. We want people to come together because we know that's what best practice. We want to have common curriculum materials because that's what research says is best for that guaranteed and viable curriculum. And then there was a second question, but I started to get excited about the evaluation.
No, that's all good. Thanks. I think the second question was the difference between the K-5 and/or K-8 implementation versus the 9-12.
The conversation really led to a moment in the process where, should we align ourselves more K-8? And I think typically, we've done that in the past. But with all of the research and looking at truly reading development, and we looked at what John Hattie says about reading development, especially in 6-12, we commit to making sure that our core literacy instruction meets the reading development of our kids. And if we look at 6-12, that is the greatest need for us to truly be looking at our engagement strategies and how we're ensuring that as our kids especially move from eighth grade to ninth grade, that the holes in that net are totally closed and it's a seamless experience for our kids. We, some of the task force members talked about, if we can embed some of those instructional practices in middle school, kids are already set up for success in high school because they know some of the routines, they know the structure, they know what to expect. And so you immediately start taking the mystery out of high school, which can be a very scary thing, and provide an opportunity for kids to feel more confident as learners and thus love to read. And that's ultimately our goal in giving you these recommendations is we want every kid, when they graduate with an MCPS diploma, to love to read. And the only way they can do that is by becoming confident readers. And the only way they can become confident readers is by getting that targeted skill instruction that they need through a strong core literacy instruction program. Did anyone wanna add to that? Did I do okay?
Any other questions? Trustee McDonald?
Okay, I, excuse me. I'm, my question's kind of based on communication of the district, the educators and the task force. And so my first couple of questions are, how was the task, task force formed? How many are in the task force? And what percent of that task force is actual active daily educators, teachers?
Great question. I know that's been a question that's come up, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide some clarification. One of the slides that BJ spoke to speaks to a lot of research around how to do this work. And there's a lot of research that talks about not having every single representative in the room together. In fact, there's a lot of research that talks about having a process in which you identify people who can come together and put on their district hat, the higher-level hat, and being able to work as a collaborative team in order to make good decisions for all kids across our system. We're lucky enough that that work started with the pencil book. What's the pencil book? School Leadership Guides, and that's from Marzano. And that, that book was read across our district and across many schools as a professional development book. What you'll notice is there was great representation across every task force where we had, we made sure that there's special education and non-special education teachers. We made sure that there's representatives from title schools and non-title schools. There was administrators, instructional coaches, as well as classroom teachers. One thing to notice out of the high school team is that there was one or two members that only came one day and chose not to come the rest of the days. And then as a result, there was two other task force members who came the last three days but didn't come the first two. And so we spent some time with the last, the two that came in the last three days to try to catch them up. And we spent a lot of time doing some individual conversations with them. I think you asked about communication. There was communication, as you saw in the last two years, where we call it the junket tour. We have been constantly going into schools and working with every team to share the progress and the processes thus far and to ask for their input through exit slips and surveys and conversations in which we continually find what is gonna be the most beneficial for you. So for example, in today's job-embedded professional development with sixth grade, sixth grade teams and seventh grade teams across the district, half of the time was spent facilitated by their colleagues who taught the teaching instructional strategy from Engage New York and then taught everyone how to do it, and they talked about why it was engaging and how you could do it in a myriad of different classrooms. That's the kind of collaborative professional development that we are establishing. And it comes from their input saying, hey, we wanna learn more about this. And I know this teacher is really solid in teaching that way and is really comfortable in getting up in front of their peers and doing so. In fact, BJ did one of those today and was, felt very inspired afterwards. And the survey results from that show a great level of commitment from teachers saying that they really enjoyed learning from their peers, and they found a nugget of information that they'll take back and embed in their practice right away. And that's that inquiry-based approach that we're trying to facilitate and foster amongst ourselves.
Okay, I guess what I was asking is, how many people are there on the task force? Twenty-two? Okay. Okay, and those are actual classroom teachers? Okay. Then my next question was, is that you talked about speaking with some of the teachers and kind of getting a feedback of what they thought problems were and what they would like, like to see. Excuse me. So, and I'm looking, what I'm looking at is kind of percentages because I'm trying, because we received quite a few letters from, from some educators that are not happy with this, with this change. So what I'm looking at is of the task force and of the people that, that you have, that the percentage of, of the teachers that you have gotten feedback from in the district and the percentage of those teachers that gave you feedback about not being happy with, with the changes. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm asking? Okay, what is the percentage, what is the percentage of the teachers in the district that you received feedback on from how they feel about the curriculum changes?
So I don't have specific percentages in front of me. I, I'm happy to connect with you later and share that information with you, but I can speak to the process if that helps answer the question. So the process was that throughout these two years, we've had set days in which the task force members have met. Amongst those days, we've also had regular job-embedded professional development days where district-wide grade-level teams have met. During those three-hour segments, we've given updates and feedback as far as what this work has been doing. In addition to that running simultaneously, certainly, my weekly meetings with Mark is the topic of conversation, but also with our weekly meetings with the principal PLC so that in regular sections, they were updated to. All of the exit slips from the job-embedded professional development from the task forces were made visible through lots of sharing of Google Docs where we typed it all out and shared it back with principals. We talked about how that would inform the next agenda. And then ultimately, when we met again, we would show those exit slips on the slide, on the, on the TV, and we would highlight, you guys said you needed this, here's where we're gonna address it in the agenda. What more do you need? And so we learned through our process and on our own learning journey that we need to make that a little bit more visible for everyone and a little bit more transparent because some of that was happening on the side, but we didn't share some of those nuances with everyone. But it was happening, and I think in doing so, there was opportunity. I think one, one challenge we faced is when teachers did not show up for the job-embedded professional development, they missed out on some of that communication.
Like, just to clarify, BJ referenced doing lesson with sixth-grade teachers today. How many sixth-grade teachers participated?
We had three from Porter, or no, five from Porter because we included the special ed and title, so about fifteen.
Every single one?
Every single sixth grade.
One teacher was gone.
If anyone else says it's not near the party, we'll need you.
Oh, yeah, there was fourteen.
We currently have, for next year, we're gonna have fifteen ELA teachers at the sixth grade. All but one was in attendance. Her mother passed away, and so that's understandable. At our seventh grade, I feel we were missing one as well, and that's because something came up with her with the sixth grade class that she's currently teaching. So predominantly, we had everybody there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess, I think it's three different questions, but I guess as a scientist, I was squirming a little bit during your presentation. Because we, what I think I heard was, we have data, but we can't, don't know how to interpret it because people, we have mixed materials. I would challenge you to use the data you have because you're telling us that there will be data, data will be used in the future to evaluate. But I've been on the board five years, and I don't think I've seen data used to evaluate what we've done in the past. So I would, I would say, take the time to take the data you have. For example, in the elementaries, you had five programs in use. Evaluate those programs in the same way you intend to evaluate this program in the future so that we can see what you mean to do in the future and use that in the past. So I guess the question one is, could you use the data you have and not just sort of fall back on, well, mixed materials make it difficult? Did the committee ever consider not using a purchase program? Did they, because I see where you jumped into purchase programs. And where I really cringed, I think, is I think the committee relied very heavily on edreports.org. And only purchase programs could be used in that system. I don't, so I don't know if edreports.org ever evaluated sort of other, other ways of teaching that weren't fixed systems. So could, how, how did you decide purchase program instead of a Missoula-based, you know, we, you know, that, that's the second part. And particularly in the high school, because your slide was very telling. In the high school, it was ninety-nine percent using novels. So that's it. Does it, I feel that's a bit of a crutch. I believe, because what we heard from the high school teachers was they were all on board for, for all of it until the materials came. They were on board for standardizing the, standardizing all the evaluating things and stuff. They just felt like that was all just set aside and it focused on materials. So I guess can ed reports or some, or could you do what ed reports did, but do it on, on the novel-based stuff that we've been doing? Because we have that data.
I'll try to remember it all, and I'll ask, some of you guys look like you're ready to go. Let me first talk about the data because I really appreciate that you're bringing up the priority of data. In the last two years, we have been very systematic about building a data-literate culture, meaning that starting last year and starting with, in support with my colleagues, Karen and Julie, we spent the entire first six months last year providing professional development and working with principals on a data-driven dialogue process that we thus adopted district-wide. From there, in all of our job-embedded professional development and task forces, I can say with my hand over my heart, every single one of those teachers has participated and has become more familiar with that data-driven dialogue protocol. In addition to that work at the district level, instructional coaches have pushed into every school and worked with grade-level teams so that they are using that data-driven dialogue protocol in a way that helps them really dig into student data and begin to look at what it tells us about how our kids are doing, where our kids are meeting standard, where they're not, and how do we respond to that. A second level of that data-driven dialogue is a common formative assessment protocol that we've also included starting this year, where every team that comes together is working through that and looking at student work samples and moderating their grading. And they're doing so with that database decision-making process. It's exciting work because you're right. I think it's one of the first times across the district that we're really starting to embed a structure around using student achievement data. And we are doing wonderfully. Our kids are achieving, but we also have room to grow. And that's part of being a practitioner, is taking on that growth mindset and identifying areas where we can grow. For example, and I hope to share this data with you in the fall, but we initiated STAR 360. In the fall, we had children achieving at forty-one percent in the green zone. By winter, some of those classes were up to eighty-one percent. And eighty is our benchmark. Eighty is what we want. Because we looked at the data in the fall, and we looked at where our kids needed to grow, and we targeted our instruction to meet their needs. And that's exactly what we wanna do with data. But it is one piece of data, and so we need to be looking at a wide variety of data sources to make really good decisions. I think you asked about, did we look at data and how our schools were doing with some of those varied materials? Yes. I'd be happy to sit down with you. I'd be happy to sit down with you in a different venue and share some of that more school granular level with Mark's facilitation, where we can say that, yep, some of our schools that do not have a strong core curriculum showed some lower student achievement scores. We can also say that, looking at the data, our current curriculum that is in the classrooms is not aligned with Common Core. And so, it's already difficult to be looking at our student achievement data when we're teaching the Common Core standards as our curriculum. And yet, the materials we're using are not the vehicle for those standards. So, I hope that starts to answer some of the questions about the data. Okay.
So, on the topic of if we evaluated the curriculum that we currently have compared to what we looked at, if we remember the slide that was all read on ed reports, so we were able to pull the elementary curriculum that fifty percent of the schools adopted. And it did show up on the, if you added, for example, if you added a second-grade classroom at a school, they would get the Common Core version of Reading Street. And that program, which is ahead of the program that most of the schools have, is all read on the first gateway and no longer continues to score. So, in elementary, we were able to compare our current program with new programs under the same screening tool. And also, under the topic of programs that aren't evaluated by ed reports, in the elementary, they had the opportunity to say, okay, well, here are the programs that are scored by ed reports. And then also, programs like Lucy Colkins that Lindsay referenced are in our schools already. People were able to suggest a program that they knew or familiar with, or Stephanie Harvey Strategies, like a toolkit that's not evaluated. And we were able to look through those as recommendations as well. So, it was considered things that were reviewed by ed reports and things that were not in the elementary.
Any other questions?
Have kind of a comment question, kind of thing. My impression from all this conversation, and I appreciate what the board has already said, is that you're not willing to settle for mediocrity anymore. You want to bring your students, our students, up to a higher level than what they're presently at and continue on up. So that the end result is that we have a better outcome at the end of K-12 than we have presently. It's going to be a different picture along there. So, it's, that's the impression I'm getting now. If I'm wrong, tell me. But I just think that, you know, you're not, you're like, you're like a bunch of flowers growing in front of us, and they're all excited because you have this new wonderful fertilizer that you want to use. I mean, that's the, I can't figure out any other way to say it. But I, so if I sound a little goofy, I'm goofy. So, but that's my.
So, I'm going to agree with you. Like, we are excited. And I'm mostly excited too, because I'm a mom. My kids are in elementary school. Yes, we're rocking it in Montana on ACTs. But when my kids get to high school and it's time for them to compete, are they going to be up to par if we don't implement this? Because I want them to go nationally. I want them to be competitive in Montana. I want them to be competitive nationally. I want them to be in their elementary school and me not have to worry, like, I don't want that teacher. Or, I would never say that. But like, are they doing the right things as the teacher in me? Because I know our teachers have skills. But if you listen to them, they all want the tools. They want the things they can pull from. So, yes, we're excited.
I'm also the president for the Montana School Boards Association. And so, I get the opportunity to go and see what other students are doing and teachers and board members are doing across the United States. And I've talked to people that have fifty-five thousand students in their school district. And I'm going, how do you manage to do, you know, to be able to, you know, stimulate all the things that students need to have in there and going on? And then I come back here and I go, we're just doing a wonderful job stimulating everything. And I just, I wished I could bottle it up and take it and put it someplace else. Because I think if we had the stimulus across the United States like we have here, we wouldn't have as many problems as we have. So, I just, I think it's great. I think you guys are awesome.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other trustee, Decker, then? Oh, someone else? Oh.
Take two, they're small. Okay. So, I'm going to try to ask a similar question to what I asked before, but maybe in a little bit different way. Which is to say that, you know, teaching is a lot like cooking. And is Engage New York at the high school level meant to be more like a reference and kind of a nutritional guide? So that over the course of a week, a month, you need to be doing these things, but essentially, we want you to be a chef? Or is it more like a meal plan? Like, is that an okay way to ask the question? Because what I'm really trying to get at is, you know, if our, if our results are terrible, we need to do something very, very different. But what I'm hearing is that for teachers, this program at the high school level feels very, very different than what they're already doing. That seems to, from some measures anyway. We've not, I have not seen this ACT data before, but I know that in many of the test scores that we've gotten back, Sentinel is the, you know, highest-performing school in Montana in a lot of, by a lot of measures, as far as I understand. And we're, you know, so I am just trying to sift and sort all of this to understand why, if this is a meal plan as opposed to a sort of chef de cuisine approach. Sort of that, okay. I've asked my question.
Your analogy is great. Not every kid is going to eat hot dogs in our district. We have an opportunity to have a variety of things that can go on in our classrooms. And the opportunity was there. It was sent to everybody to be, and, you know, apply for the task force. I had the opportunity to work with the high school teachers. You see, it was a small committee of teachers, unfortunately. But those teachers that made that dedication to come learned a lot. And we had some really hard conversations wrapped around, do we do anything? Do we look at these programs? And, you know, you hear the word can. And that is, I read it, I'm on page one, and I'm going to do all of these questions, you know, down the line. And this is where I'm going to be. And these are the assignments that I'm going to have. That's not how Engage New York is, and that's not how any of the K-5 programs are. Engage New York does allow for some flexibility. Right now, it looks like it's, I have to be on page one and read this book. There are recommended texts that go with it. There are recommended excerpts. But if a teacher wants to read the entire book, let's read the whole book. So, we have set up time, starting on Friday, I have the high school ELA teachers coming back. And starting that implementation plan of what does this look like? And how can we address so that we're not all eating hot dogs and we can be chefs that have and show that craft and that passion that brings kids into our classroom and engages them in the text that they're reading? And so, in the beginning, it is going to seem like it's a little bit more, it's tight, because it is the tightest we've ever been with high school, to be outright honest, for a long time. And we have a lot of novels that are being, a lot of great novels that are being read across the district. But you will hear, and I've heard it directly from teachers, one teacher reads two novels, I read twelve. Where's the equity in that? You know, so we have to try and get closer. It doesn't mean we want to take away teacher autonomy, but we can get closer so that when they do come to those, even within their PLC, within their building, you might have four or five teachers that are sitting together in a PLC that are doing completely different things. Are, can we do that focused on the same priorities? Sure. Can we create a common assessment wrapped around five different novels? If we really spend the time to talk about, what do we want students to know and be able to do by the end of that novel? Sure, we can use those things. Because not every student has to read a novel, because we can pull an excerpt or we can pull an article that might go with a topic or the theme or, you know, whatever that may be, and allow for that flexibility so that it's not taking away that complete autonomy. But I have heard teachers are ready for some of those common conversations wrapped around common materials. But how can we do this system and allow for some, allow for that flexibility and still have that autonomy? Does that make sense?
Okay, I have like four questions, but I'm going to try and pare it down. And Jody actually just answered one of my, I think, which was about implementation. And as we implement this program, one of my questions is going to be, when is the first chance to review and evaluate? And I think you just told me you're already doing that.
We're in the process right now. And on Friday, like Elise had mentioned, it's an invitation implementation. So, and it's only for Module One that has three units within that module. And we started, what we did with the task force the last meeting we had was started a suggested timeline so that when people, when teachers got to that mid-assessment and the end of the unit assessment, like for freshmen, we've scheduled one in for November to have all teachers come to the table and bring that end-of-the-unit assessment and reflect on, how did things go? But not just waiting till that unit is done. We want to be able to get into those PLCs and say, how's this going? Can we put some lessons together so that we can tighten that timeline up for you? Because without having really been engaged with it, we don't know which ones we can tie together yet. But in going through it, I feel like as a teacher, I know which ones we could probably put together to speed up that timeline. Because you look at it and you think, holy moly, fifty-seven lessons, that's going to take me fifty-seven days. Well, I think we could probably cut that down a little bit.
Okay, two more quick questions then. And one had to do with data. And when Diane asked her question, this made me think of it. And we do have different programs, especially in the elementary, at least. Do we now have, from some of the teachers, BJ just left, but that are already doing the Engage New York, do we have some assessment data for them? And is it, is it showing improvement over the older systems?
So, that's a great question, right? Our sixth-grade teachers at Washington have been using Engage New York. And I believe seventh grade at Washington and seventh grade at another school? I don't remember which one. I'm losing track of all of it. And then we have eighth-grade teachers at Porter who have been using it. And so, part of the reason that organically happened this morning was because in our last data dialogue, when we all came together, one team brought a writing sample from Engage New York, and one team brought a writing sample from a prompt that they had created. And so, they sat down and they had a dialogue about how many students were successful on this prompt and how many students were successful on the Engage New York thing. And that's where that difficult to compare those two different assessments and to tell, was it the assessment or the instruction that really drove the dial for one group over the other? And so, this time, what happened is everybody in the room came back with the one that had been successful from last time. And so, everybody, everybody naturally just gravitated toward the Engage New York after our meeting back in January.
Okay. And final two quick questions. We talked, I don't know, Jody or Elise was talking about the real important transition from eighth to ninth. Are we having any conversation with our feeder schools? Do they looking to us for any help in getting them ready for their eighth graders? And then finally, my other question is, had to do with, how is AP and IB classes affected by this?
I love how they look at me. Absolutely. There's two points around the feeder school, because that's a question that comes up a lot. First, there is a sense that we need to get our house in order on some things, right? And so, working together to make sure that we're all speaking the same speak, talking the same talk, and coming together as a collaborative system. Having said that, throughout the entire task force work, we had representatives from Potomac and Clinton who participated, who acknowledged that because they're smaller systems, don't get the presenters to come out and actually teach the model lesson in real time with students and adult learners. And so, we invited them to come because they were interested. And their curriculum review per the Office of Public Instruction matched up with our curriculum review. So, they were reviewing English Language Arts materials at the same time we are. I can also speak to when we adopted STAR 360 as our universal screener. We worked a lot with this met, because they adopted it at the same time, too. And so, there are pockets of opportunity for us to collaborate. And certainly, we want more. But sometimes, we need to get our house in order first for us to be able to build outwards. And I want to make sure always that our teachers feel well-supported with the right resources, time, instructional coaching support, that they need to feel successful. And from there, we need to find those opportunities to connect with our neighbors. As far as the IB and AP, as a principal of an old IB school, the answer is no. No, it won't affect them. No. I think that's been a misnomer out there, and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that.
Essentially, they won't.
They will not be influenced by this because there are other requirements in those curriculum.
So, the novel lists and all that stuff, doesn't affect anything?
Any other trustee questions? Trustee New?
Just to start off, I appreciate the time you've taken tonight to come educate us, because we are certainly, as Grace pointed out, not the experts in ELA curriculum. And I also appreciate you answering the why, because that was sort of a lingering issue in my own mind about if something's not broken, then why are we trying to fix it? But I think the presentation did a good job of demonstrating where we're doing some things well and where we could be doing things better. And I really appreciate the comment from Elise about we can be doing things better. That is kind of the mindset, I think, that we should be approaching this with. So, in that vein, I'm trying to, at least with respect to the high school piece of this, understand better. And we've, we've heard a couple of examples provided. But what actually makes this Engage New York curriculum better than the way we are doing it now? I'm hearing the theme of common materials and the PLCs working with common materials, which seems to be important. I'm also hearing the theme of common assessments, which seems important. But it also seems like a big piece of the curriculum, the Engage New York curriculum, is this script. So, I'm also hearing that there's a lot of flexibility with that, and we don't have to follow it. So, to me, I guess the question is, why, why are we going to adopt a curriculum that provides this script that we're going to set aside? Is it because of the common materials that are being recommended by Engage New York and the common assessments that are provided? Is that what distinguishes it and makes it valuable? Or can we, can we decide as a district the materials we'd like to use that are common materials and develop assessments around those? In other words, can we develop our own curriculum, which is probably a crazy notion? And then my second, my second question is, with respect to the elementary materials, was there anything in the presentations from the vendors or when you dove into the curriculums themselves that addressed dyslexic learners and screening for dyslexia?
So, to clarify, with the flexibility at the high school level, it's not a meaning of just setting it aside. It's using it as a foundation of just setting it aside, it's using it as a foundation and being able to supplement where we feel like we can supplement. Not one program out there, no system, no curriculum system, that you have access to, whether you purchase it from some big company that has spent, you know, a lot of time researching and building a program. Would you ever follow it page by page, piece by piece? You're gonna, you are going to make adjustments. It doesn't matter if you're teaching kindergarten, or if you're teaching 12th grade, there's going to be some flexibility in that. There's no silver bullet that's going to get to us and have those, the standards met the way we need to meet the standards. Does that make sense? So, it's not like we're just gonna take Engage New York and just put it to the side. The reason we looked at it is, I've heard from teachers, and with the task force, we agreed as a task force and as a K-12 team, that we needed to have some common ground to talk about that supports the priority standards that we have addressed as a district. And in order to do that, we need to have the, some of those common materials. And in fact, I was just visiting with Elise today about, we have to dig into those Engage New York materials, and we also are going to take a look at all of the book lists that are within each building, because there are multiple books, from one book to, I wanna say there was fourteen hundred books of nineteen eighty-four at one of the high schools. And so, it's like, we can take a look at those and say, "How can we do this system that supports the Common Core and still allow for those novel studies that people are passionate about, but have some of the same novel studies?" And again, I go back to, even within our buildings, we have to be able to have those common conversations wrapped around the standards, and that's not necessarily always happening. It's happening, but it's not always consistent. And so, we have to have that common ground, so that we can get to a more guaranteed and viable curriculum for our students.
And if I can just, one thing to add, when we're speaking about teachers, teaching and learning, we're speaking about all of our teachers. Across MCPS, we have over seven hundred certified teachers. Twenty percent of them are new teachers to MCPS. With our new instructional coaches, as they move in and support our new teachers, whether or not they've been teaching in other districts or not, they come into classrooms without any materials. Or they come not knowing what the novels are that they should be teaching and what they should be doing. Some of this is not only about what some teachers believe is best practice, but what we are doing across our entire system to ensure that every teacher is set up for success, so that the kids in those classrooms have those learning opportunities. Right now, I can't put my hand over my heart and say that, when we have teachers coming to us saying, "Oh, my gosh, what am I teaching? What materials am I using? Because I don't have access to something." That's something that we're trying to turn and change. And so, when we're speaking about teaching and learning, we're not just speaking about the AP teacher, we're not just speaking about the nine-twelve teachers, we're speaking about all of our teachers and their need and desire to be set up for success. And we do so by making sure they have the right materials in their hand, so that they can do their best work that we hired them to do, because we know they do it and our kids deserve it.
If I could ask a clarifying question. I know that one of the discussions had been that at nine-twelve, we would look at potential implementation by invitation. And I believe I saw a list today that identified a number of high school teachers that responded as wanting to participate on an opt-in basis. Can you tell us how many high school teachers responded and wanted to opt in to use Engage New York?
There are over fifteen teachers, I believe seventeen from Big Sky and Hellgate, and one from Willard. Bless her heart, she teaches eleven-twelfth on her own, so she's dying for collaboration. And they will be coming and joining us as we begin to invite them to be on this learning journey with us, to try this module, give us feedback, where is it working, where is it not, where do we need to tweak, where do we need to really embed this and learn with each other along this way? And through that learning journey, no doubt, we will build that guaranteed viable curriculum across MCPS.
Trustee Lorenzen? And then trustee Decker again?
But you know, we're on number one of fifteen agenda items that we have to get through tonight.
This is huge, this affects nine thousand students. I guess I want to clarify, AP, I get it, it's a known curriculum, the kids learn the material, they go to college, the college professor knows they already know it. So, I get AP. IB, we've heard for years, IB is a way of teaching, it's a way of thinking, a lot of that sort of talk. It's fascinating to me that our two IB high schools are wanting this material. I don't know if these are non-IB teachers in IB high schools that feel a need for this. That's surprising. But my big question is, for the IB elementaries, we have two IB elementaries and one dual-language elementary, are they just out, or do they, do they do IB-type teaching using the prescribed curriculums, or what?
First and foremost, all of the materials for K-5 are in Spanish as well. So, we have been working with the Spanish teachers at Paxton to make sure that they have reviewed the materials on their own site, they looked at all of the Spanish materials available and gave input on those. And we will be continuing to ask for their input as far as an implementation about what that looks like. So, absolutely, they're very much a part of this, and it's really exciting that curriculum resources now have a second language component to them, whereas in the past, there hasn't been that many opportunities. I think, secondly, as a principal from an old IB school, most IB schools will have a common material, and then they work and embed the units of inquiry with that, so that as you're using a unit of inquiry, you bring in that, all of the components and the pedagogical approaches of inquiry, and you do so with a married approach with the materials, and it actually is a beautiful, really rich learning experience. It happens across the world, and it's something that we would certainly use our IB consultants and people to help us, but it's certainly something that we're familiar with. And when we went and presented all this information to Lewis and Clark, one of the task force members is a first, second grade teacher, and she was very supportive of the material recommendation, and she spoke articulately about how this would already be able to build off of what they've developed with their program of inquiry, which is the six units of inquiry that they teach from.
I think we have trustee Decker, then trustee Newbold.
Okay. I'm actually gonna ask a question in that direction, I think. You've been in the hot seat a long time. I guess my question is about process from here, because this was on the agenda tonight as an action item we were gonna be asked to vote on. And it's an information, well, it was taken off?
It was on here just for information.
Okay.
Right.
Didn't we X that off, though? Okay. So, it is just an information item at this point?
Right.
So, my, my question is, where are we going from here? What should we be expecting as far as next steps?
Well, if you read the background in here in the recommendations, it indicates that it's going to be posted online and receive public comment for a month, and likely to be on the June twelfth board meeting as an action item. Is that-
Okay.
-that language under recommendations?
Okay. And if I may help clarify, on the second-
Okay, I'm sorry, my confusion, thank you.
On the second level of the admin building, all of these materials are out for display, including the books and the novel lists, as well as the assessments. And we welcome an opportunity, I know some of you have already done this, but let's set up a meeting, and we can help walk you through it and give you some time to really look through it and help to answer some further questions. I think there's a lot of support from this across the district, and I think there's some questions that continually need to be answered. And so, helping you have the right information, that really represents the greater commitment and knowledge from across all of our buildings is really important.
So, I guess I still do have a process question then, which is, when we see new policies, we have like a first reading, and then there's public comment on it. Are we going to, at some point, be voting as a first? But this, or will this be a single action when that time comes?
Sorry, right, it will be an action item, because we have to purchase with year-end dollars, the purchase has to be done by June thirtieth. If, if there is a purchase. I mean, if there's not a purchase, then it's moot, but-
Sure. So, essentially, tonight's intent is to notice the public that the materials are available for review, that we'll take that public comment up through June twelfth, and that the action would be considered by the trustees at June twelfth. But we want everybody to have this month to ask their questions, review materials, become informed, so that they can provide their feedback, and then you ultimately can make a determination.
And trustee Newbold?
I just don't think anyone addressed the second question I had about dyslexic learners and the elementary curriculum.
Can anyone talk about that?
Yeah, go, go.
And I don't know if you saw your email today. I sent out an email about dyslexia specifically. We're participating with the University of Montana in a research study that's been funded by the National Institute of Health, kindergarten through second grade, taking a look at screening and coming to understand interventions regarding dyslexia and learning difficulties in general. And then in addition to that, Karen Allen is working with staff to pull together a district committee to take a deep dive with regard to dyslexia. Dyslexia is not recognized by the state of Montana as a disabling condition. So, the question is, what do we do as a district to establish appropriate procedures and protocol for identification and then for providing service? So, we've got those two particular balls rolling right now.
And do we, just, just generally speaking, do we know whether any of these curriculums, was there anything in the presentations or the materials or anything that spoke to that issue?
Not dyslexia, but a really cool thing in the curriculum that, of the elementary, is the ERLA that we're pulling from ARC. And basically, what it is, is a lot of different levels with colors and numbers, and we can hone in on every single kid in our class exactly where they're at in their reading, what skill they need to hit to move forward. And so, I could have kids, two kids at two blue, and there's a very specific lesson that I can teach them to move them on to the next level, and we have put, at the end of second grade, they need to be at this level, benchmark it. But it is, for elementary teachers, so often we say, "They're struggling in their reading, and I need to find exactly where they're, you know, what, what we've missed." And the ERLA is huge for that, huge for that. And so, we can help them move on specifically, instead of, "Oh, here, this is what you need to work on," when the kid's like, "I don't need to work on that." The ERLA is beautiful, yeah, really good. Doesn't address dyslexia, though.
And that is why we had Tracy McGary involved too. And we know that there's much more conversation that needs to happen, but there was a lens on that differentiation that's needed, not only for students who are on an IEP, but for all of our students, whatever their varied levels of learning is.
Trustee Beers?
No, just a request. So, the materials are available on the second level of the administration building for review? In the spirit of accessibility, can we find a place that's accessible to display those materials?
Absolutely.
Good point, Michael, thank you. Any other trustee questions or comments? Seeing none, then we'll take any board comment, public comment on this item, and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, please, since we've got fourteen other items to get to tonight. And so, if you can sign in, and then if you represent an organization, also identify the organization. Thanks.
Do a little yoga session. Should I wait for Grace? Should I wait for Grace? Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah. My name is Sarah Poehl, and I'm an English teacher at Sentinel High School. And I'm glad that we're talking about data, we're gonna pick apart a little bit. I have a comment and also a question. I mean, in terms of the data, one of the things that we're not seeing, the ed report, ed report talks about the programs being evaluated based on the quality of the materials, the rigor of the materials. But we, what we're looking for as ELA teachers is some data that proves that Engage New York makes students better writers, makes them have higher reading comprehension and raises test scores. And we still haven't seen those links, so we're concerned that the idea of growing isn't really growing, it's just movement. And so, again, the idea of that kind of progress is different from just identifying quality texts. And so, I just wanted to list a few quality texts that we teach, and then there's lots more, but nineteen eighty-four, The Things They Carried, Fahrenheit four fifty-one, The Great Gatsby, Kite Runner, Of Mice and Men, The Count of Monte Cristo, Night, Brave New World, Lord of the Flies, Life of Pi, Catcher in the Rye, Illustrated Man, there's probably twenty others. None of these, not one of these texts is in Engage New York in its entirety. We find that incredibly problematic. Our question is, that in addition to, we recognize that there are some texts that are taught in their entirety, there are eight complete texts, but during their high school experience with Engage New York, isn't it true that only two of them, and that's The Awakening and The Namesake, are novels? So, we're just focusing on the high school curriculum? I wouldn't begin to pretend that I knew what was best for middle school teachers or elementary school teachers. And we're not trying to take materials away from high school teachers who want to use them. We'd like to see the program stay opt-in always, only, if students, if teachers want to use it. Because, again, with the novels, we feel like there are ways to get at the Common Core standards by using those novels, highly effective ways to guarantee a viable curriculum. And that, again, the novels are important for cultural literacy, all those things. Can you imagine if no one had a reference to any of the books that I listed? That the great American novel, The Great Gatsby, is not listed on that text? And as far as I can tell, in a document that's twenty-five hundred pages for every single grade level, and about a hundred and sixty-six lessons that are meant to be forty-five-minute class periods, there's not a ton of flexibility. You don't just throw in three or four novels into that. And so, we're worried that it's going to get approved, and then, and then we'll be that frog in the pot that didn't feel it was boiling. Yeah, so, we thank you for your public service, and we really just urge the board to see that there are more ways to doing, to teaching the Common Core standards, and that you just continue to say that this is always going to be opt-in. Thank you.
Thanks. Any additional public comment?
Hi, good evening, Melanie Charleston, Missoula. I received an email late this afternoon from Debbie Hendricks, an English teacher at Hellgate High School. She had intended to be here, and she got invited to a special event for her nephew at the university. So, she knows I attend the meetings, and asked if I would please read the letter on her behalf. So, from Debbie Hendricks at Hellgate. Dear Board, you have presented the ELA curriculum for adoption this evening. Please consider caution and leave opportunity to revisit after a trial year. My concerns after a short exploration of the materials include: Cost. Extensive copying or supplying all students in a grade with the same text at the same time. Quality and quantity. Doesn't include Indian Ed for All. Relevant local materials. Are teaching excerpts of books enough for a good substitute to delving deeply into text? Accessibility. I had difficulty downloading, which adds to prep time, lost class time, et cetera. We teachers are constantly told by administration that we are respected professionals. However, I did not feel included in this curricular decision. My first brief overview of Engage New York happened last Thursday, May four. If this is to start in September, when will there be training? Any time to learn to use the resources? Materials are not easily accessible. Last weekend, I spent one hour randomly exploring one unit, Module twelve-point-four, twelfth grade, Module four, Unit two, The Overcoat. I could not download the text, which should be available free online. Accessibility. The unit had twenty-three lessons. I looked at two lessons, eleven pages each, but couldn't open the other lessons, two-hundred-fifty-plus copies just for lesson material. Cost and accessibility. I never did find handouts, quizzes, et cetera. If our district is truly making decisions based on data, please note that MCPS is above the state average by eight percentage points. There are no statistics about how much we can expect to improve, for examples of where others started and how much they have improved. Improving curriculum should always be the goal. Change for the sake of change is not a good reason to discard what has been successful. Maybe the district needs to use the professionals it has to improve what's working. Please exercise caution. Thank you for listening. Debbie Hendricks, Hellgate.
Thanks. Any other public comment on this agenda item?
Hi, good evening. I am Jen Reinecke, and I am the English Department chair at Sentinel. Thank you again for your work and your service to our community. Also, I want to thank the ELA task force members. As I said the last time that I was here speaking, I respect the work that my colleagues on the task force have done. I just have a couple of comments that I want to share. One is a clarification of the ACT data in terms of how competitive we are or not. One thing that I think is important to mention is that Montana, we test all of our students, so it's grant-funded, so we take a school day and we test all the juniors in the state, so our data looks different than national data, because across the nation, people pay for the test, and they show up on a Saturday, and it's typically just students who are taking the test to get into college versus every single junior, whether they're college-bound or not. So, before we started doing that test that way, our scores were much higher than the nation's scores usually, but we still have in our district higher scores than the rest of the state. So, I just think that's kind of an important clarification in terms of how we read that data. I was part of the task force the first year. The first year, we identified the priority standards. I've been teaching in the district for eighteen years, I've been part of the curriculum review process every single time that it came up during those eighteen years. And I thought that the fact that we identified priority standards that all of the high schools could agree on was amazing. I don't think we should be able to just kind of teach whatever we want and without any sort of accountability. We do, at Sentinel, believe that guaranteed viable curriculum is important, and those common conversations are important, and common assessments are important, but we believe that the curriculum is the standards and not the materials. And our recommendation all along has been that those teachers who feel like Engage New York is a good fit for their students, and that the lessons will work for their students to help them teach the standards, they should be able to use it as a resource, but that nobody should ever be mandated to use this program. We have a- have a concern about the implementation. First of all, we're grateful that the first year became an opt-in year instead of a mandatory-for-all year. But we're a little bit concerned that if the feedback during that year only comes from the teachers who have chosen to opt-in in the first place, then there are already people who are on board with this kind of curriculum, and so that their feedback might not be an accurate reflection of what's best for all the students that aren't represented by teachers participating in Engage New York. We agree with the Task Force that a guaranteed viable curriculum does not mean the same lessons the same day in the same way. So we recommend not voting for a program that does offer scripted lessons, especially when the steps about how it's going to be used and how much of it is going to be mandated in the future are not clearly defined. So thank you again for your time. We appreciate you being here.
Thanks. Any additional public comment?
Hi, I'm Becky Sorensen. I'm the principal at Hawthorne. I just have to say that I'm really proud of the work that the Task Force has done. They've worked really hard to look at the standards, assessments, and instruction within the classroom and align it. Because when we align all of that, we're going to get student achievement. I also appreciate the feedback that I've received this year and the information I've received from teaching and learning as we look forward to implementation, because I can stand side-by-side my teachers, work together to implement a solid curriculum in our buildings. The other thing that you didn't hear about is their plan, their plan for implementation. Along with the materials don't teach, teachers teach. But effective teachers and effective schools equal student achievement. And so with the materials at the elementary and the standards and assessments, we're also looking at effective practices. And one of the things that teaching and learning did was listen to the teachers, and with the professional development that they've planned, they have a leveled system. So like, I have some teachers at Hawthorne that are familiar with the daily five-cafe model of teaching. They've been working on it the last couple of years. But we're all proud of what we do, and we all are doing a good job and working hard, but we all recognize we can get better, and better with that alignment, and better with our practices. So they've offered an advanced training as well as a beginning training, and the teachers can opt, decide, which one do I need? So also, the administrators are going to be trained. So we can stand side-by-side our teachers and support them, not only from the district side of it, but at, in the building, so that I can understand what they're doing, I can stand side-by-side, and I can look for ways to help support them and do what's best for our students.
Any additional public comment?
Hello. Thank you, everyone. My name is Teresa McGary. I'm an occupational therapist. I've been in the district, I think, for 15 years. I've served from preschool up through high school and almost every building in the district. And I'm passionate about helping our special needs students have access to the curriculum. And as Hatton and Tracy Long so eloquently talked about the importance of making our website accessible, it's vitally important that our curriculum is accessible. And without a guaranteed curriculum, that is almost impossible. If teachers are coming, you know, from different schools and different, you know, having their own ideas about what they're going to teach, it's hard for me and the rest of the staff to be able to support our special ed teachers. I think it ties in with students who have dyslexia. We can be providing auditory materials in lots of different ways for those students to access the materials, if we have a finite group of materials that we can work on. So that's just one part of this puzzle that I don't think has come to light yet. So just, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on this agenda item?
Hi there. Meredith Britt, Sentinel. So I just wanted to list a couple of concerns that I have, as well as one question. I understand that Module 1 will be implemented in 2018, 2018, on that optional standpoint. I am curious, and maybe some worries about what 2019, 2020 looks like, so where it goes from there. And while I do not want to take away the option to teach Engage New York from any interested party, that's never our goal, to take away any options, I've got questions about if it becomes fully adopted with all the modules across the district, how it looks for Indian Education for All. As at the high school level, Engage New York includes one short story, two articles, and one poem written by Native American authors over four years of curriculum. I want to be sure there's a plan in place to ensure that the Montana State IEFA law will be followed if we adopt Engage New York. It's a big concern when I add up the modules, if we go fully implemented. I worry that there wouldn't be time for that. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment on this agenda item?
Hi, my name is Cassidy Brooks, and I'm also an English teacher at Sentinel High School. And I am also a product of the MCPS district. I graduated in 2010, and three of my former teachers are sitting in this classroom, or in this room. So I'm a testament to how much student, or teachers care about their students and the influence they have on students. I wouldn't be here today without them as a teacher. So there's a couple of points that I want to make as well in terms of concerns here. One member asked, and I lost track of who, whether or not create our own curriculum was possible. And I would argue that it could be. It would be difficult, absolutely. But at Sentinel, we've done that work around prioritizing standards in alignment with the district standards. But we've talked about which materials, books, we absolutely want to teach at every grade level. We have common assessments for every single priority standard that we all teach, and so that we can have those common conversations around those. And so spreading that to the district level would absolutely be difficult. That's a lot more cooks in the kitchen, so to speak. But I think it would be worth the time to explore and have that conversation and see if it would be doable. My second concerns come with cost of the program of Engage New York. At face value, Engage New York is free. It's online. And so if you don't want to go to the first floor of the admin building, it is available to see, if you simply Google search it as well. And a lot of those materials are downloadable, but to teach a module at the same time would require to have everyone have the same books, same texts at the same time. And so with new nonfiction titles, plays, and two novels, without including photocopying costs, at Sentinel alone, we've estimated it would cost about $35,000 to implement Engage New York. And so I'm wondering how much it would cost to do this at all five high schools across the district and the middle schools, and where that money might come from. As well as, this would definitely take some professional development in order for us to do this well, if we're going to do it, and where that time and that money will come from to make that happen as well. So just certain things to hopefully we can clarify, get more information on before we move forward. And again, as my colleagues have stated, these people have done incredible work. It's not to be discounted. We just really want to kind of hit pause and think about what the best option is for all students and all teachers moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment on this agenda item?
I'm Lori Messenger from Seeley Swan High School. I just have a couple of things. Want to just continue to add my concerns about Indian Ed for All, which we've worked so very hard on and towards and believe in, and where that falls in this. But also, place-based learning has been a large emphasis for us, and we've talked a lot about connection K through 12, but we haven't been talking about university very much. And we live in a community that has one of the strongest creative writing programs in the country, and English departments in the country. And we have incredible resource there. We have local writers that I bring into my classrooms frequently. In Seeley, we are connected to the McLean family and get some, you know, teaching support there. And I just worry with the, some flexibility, but not loads of flexibility, about our opportunity to bring in these really rich local resources throughout the year to supplement what our kids are learning in high school.
Thanks. Any other public comment on this agenda item?
Thank you. It's been a long day. I may as well speak. I am Joe Fisher. I'm a teacher at Sentinel High School, a social studies teacher. I've had one son graduate from MCPS, and another son who is a sophomore, and of course, a taxpayer. A couple of things as a social studies teacher. Our English department makes every other PLC in our building look terrible. This has been one of the most functional groups that I've seen. And this district obviously has invested a tremendous amount of time, effort, and money into the PLC process. Been to a bunch of conferences. I want to say eight or nine years. And it's, it is potentially a very good thing. And I can't say enough for what our ELA has done. They have, they have gone through the process of creating prioritized standards, multiple common assessments. They've done a fabulous job of creating an ACT prep that all junior teachers teach. They have grammar all the way through. And it's sad to me that, to an extent, they've been asked to do this work, but now, to an extent, they're being told, we're going to throw it away. And that's, that's really discouraging. Again, as a unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, a veteran teacher, I've seen that far too often, to go down a course, which happens far too often in MCPS, and then to say, we're throwing it away. So thank you so much, English teachers. Secondly, I would say this is very much an elementary, middle school, and high school issue. It's not, I would agree with Jennifer Reinicki or Sarah, who said, I have no place to say what should happen in the elementary level or the middle school level. But from a high school level, this process that has gone through sends a chilling effect to me, the process of, the whole curriculum process, because I know we're up next with social studies. And I'm not looking forward to that process at all, based on what has happened previously. Next, again, going back, I apologize for saying this again, to the fantastic RTI training I had about seven or eight or nine years ago, where the person who was leading this conversation says, never rely on research-based evidence. It needs to be research-verified. And I have not heard that term once. I've heard, this is research-based, this is research-based. Anything can be research-based. Show me research-verified. And I'm also uncomfortable with teaching and learning, replying two times, that, I appreciate your question, I will get together with you personally and describe that, where the data is. And all of us need to know that data. It needs to be on public comment. So it can't just be with one trustee. It needs to be with everybody out in an open area. If there's data, fantastic. If there's a better way to do it, I'm all for it. Once again, I thank all of you, and I really do appreciate the effort of teaching and learning, the instructional coaches, and the work that this whole group has done. Thank you.
Thanks. Any additional public comment on any agenda item?
Hi there. The night has grown long, so I'll be quick. My name's Annie Shick, and I teach at Sentinel High School. I've been in the district five years now, and this is the second half of my career, second district. And I feel like I'm at the highlight of my career in that I am honored to teach alongside my colleagues at Sentinel, and to come into several years of PLC work, and to see just how beautiful it is, and how vertically aligned it is, how we hit the priority standards, and we work together. And I think that the same work could be done throughout the district. We have, and I think that we're on the cusp of seeing this work come to its fruition in our students. We've just gotten to the point where we've done what was asked, and we are proud of our work. And now, we would love to see our students benefit. So I would hope that we could take a pause and allow for that data to come forward, give our students some time to go through the four years with this curriculum that we've created. The other thing I'd like to say is that I'm also a almost graduate of the Arts Integrated Program, created a pulse at the university, and I am enjoying bringing arts into my classroom. And I'm highly concerned that if we use the scaffolding approach that is, that is Engage New York, and we look at the math, we've got about 93% of our time given to Engage New York. That doesn't leave a whole lot of time for letters about literature, for poetry out loud, to bring authors in, to work and to bring arts and to integrate it into our classrooms. And I think that when we talk about differentiation, we talk about meeting our students and the art of teaching, we need to be aware that each instructor will, you know, can bring these things, especially here in Missoula, we have so many resources, as you know, and as we've heard tonight. Please consider that small 7% that we have left to do a whole lot, including grammar and vocab instruction that is not very strong in Engage New York. And thanks so much for your time and for being here so late.
Thank you, guys, for your patience. Really quick question. We talked about IB and AP, so those students will be exempt from this program. They'll be able to keep reading whatever novels their instructors feel are most appropriate for their learning. Dual credit is another really important component, especially at Sentinel High School, where I think we do pretty well with dual credit. I don't remember, I think like the governor was there to talk about how great it was. I don't know. I forget. But dual credit's a really important question to ask, and whether or not they're going to be exempt from these, this curriculum set as well. So I would urge you to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. Well, thank you to everyone for your time, for being here. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. But before we do that, I'm going to ask Marina, I'm going to say, you should probably go home. We're going to be here really late. And I was going to tell Maddie to go, too. And so I will write you a letter of excuse if you need it. So, pardon? No, you don't. So now we're moving on to B1, which is an Elementary Building Reserve Fund update. And so everyone, feel free to take a break individually as you want, but rather than trying to take a big break, I think that will eat too much into the time. So Burley, you're up.
A little disappointed I lost my audience for this important documentation here. If you look at page 76, you will see the elementary board update that was left off of the last board meeting. One thing I'll point out is the third quarter expenditures for 1718 was $26,732. With year-to-date of $71,594, this reserve levy has expired two years ago, almost. So we have, we continue to string it out a little bit to help the district out the best we can. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Lorenzen?
So I'm reading this really fast, because I didn't read it ahead of time. I guess I'm a little surprised to see repairs at Paxson, which has been through the bond process, repairs at Rattlesnake, the fan again. And then, and also repairs to roofs that I thought were bond projects. So if you could answer that. And then, why so much money for tree removal?
Yeah, so, good questions. We, first, work repair is, we're not replacing every single roof within our district. We had all our roofs assessed, and we are replacing those that are in serious need with what the budget allowed. We're replacing quite a bit. We have over 2 million square feet of roofing, so we have a lot. So there's still some minor repairs to be done on our roofing. And by the end of the bond project, we won't have all of our roofing replaced, but we'll have a majority of it. The heating and plumbing repairs at Paxson and Metal Hill, well, Metal Hill's not currently a bond project, but the, at Paxson was, not all the equipment was replaced, and our warranty is up. So we're now, we have a one-year construction warranty to end in January, so the rest is on ours. And I can't particularly speak to this one part, but it wasn't a 100% replacement, and we are out of warranty, so it would be an expense on our end. Rattlesnake fan was for the nurse's office, so we had some exhaust in there with some unwanted smells from the nursing office. So we put that in there, which was never designed within the bond project.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on to two, which is to authorize the use of building reserve carryover funds for the Rattlesnake field improvements. And so this is really to get the, a better alignment within the budget?
That's exactly right. I asked the board to support use of building funds to assist with the Rattlesnake projects pending the final board approval in August, and the alignment with the building reserve carryover would be more appropriate. So I'm asking to switch from the authority on the building fund to the building reserve fund.
So is, this is the secondary building reserve fund?
That's correct.
And how much money is in there?
There's, this is the carryover specifically, so about $550,000 total.
And how much is the And how much is the project?
We're estimating about $225,000.
To the Rattlesnake soccer fields?
Correct.
No. It would develop a new area that, so it would be...
It would be a multipurpose field, but used for football practice, and it would be north of the soccer fields on the property that we own there. Contiguous, too.
Would we save money, because we wouldn't have to maintain the River Bowl now? Would we save a little down there?
We might save a little, in that football causes excessive wear and tear on the River Bowl, but we'll still use the River Bowl for health enhancement classes, so we would still do some top dressing and continued maintenance.
Any other, any other questions for Pat? Trustee Smith?
Just one on the schedule for those Hellgate changes. I understand that that changed, that moved, did that affect, was that affected because of the change in funding that you wanted to do, or was that just something else?
The, mostly, it's the ultimate funding sources from the Senate Bill 307, permissive levy in the building reserve. And we have, so that's within the building reserve fund. And then, so using this carryover now has better alignment, it's cleaner.
Yeah, but I mean, but didn't we just push that project back a year? Is that...
We haven't made the determination. It could be constructed next spring. We will not construct it this spring now. So this may ultimately be a moot point, but part of it depends on just assessing schedule and making that final determination.
Right, thank you.
Trustee?
I do have a question. I don't necessarily expect the answer tonight, but since we're talking about this, and we've talked about it a couple times before, I do wonder how the football players are going to get up there for practice. I know that in the past, as the parent of a soccer player, they have, they do have practices up there, and there were always issues about how to get the kids there. I assume that will also be the case with the football players. I know that some of the kids tried to take the regular bus, but then there's still the problem of how they get home, or back to school, or whatever. And I know that some of the older kids did drive some of the younger kids, but it's, that's just been a question that I've wondered about, and would love to have an answer to it at some point.
And I would just say, that is part of our conversation, and it actually factors into our decision that we aren't going to build right now. We find that situation with softball and soccer both, so we're examining that at the present time.
Thanks. Any other questions for Pat, or Superintendent Thane? Seeing none, then is there a motion to authorize the use of the building reserve carryover funds to cover the Rattlesnake field improvements if they are made? Moved by trustee Smith, is there a second? Second by trustee Lorenzen? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to authorize the use of building reserve carryover funds for this improvement? If it happens, please indicate by raising your hand. That's... No, it's high school. It's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we are on to, the next item is an elementary trustee action item, and that does mean that, although I use the term elementary, it's trustees who cover both elementary and high school issues, rather than those of us who vote on just high school issues. So this is to engage the CS Porter Middle School architect, and the recommendation is Paradigm V2 Architect to be, that the trustees authorize the engagement of Paradigm V2 Architect for the renovation and construction of CS Porter Middle School. And so, Burley, if you want to highlight whether this followed the normal procedures we've heard about in prior, prior practice, and, and tell us how it went.
Yeah, it went very well. And of course, we did the same practice where we had our committee, and that committee consisted of, and I appreciate their time, Superintendent Thane, trustee Kendall, Pat McHugh, Karen Allen, Dave Roth, and Principal Lisa Hendrick. So we appreciate them taking the time to, to select this architect for this very important process. We are happy to recommend Paradigm V2 Architects. We did work with them before on the Rattlesnake project, and we're very happy with them, and we're looking forward to this project as well. And I would like to thank Carl Pozowitz, too. He is here from Paradigm tonight, and he learned a lot about, about curriculum in Missoula County Public Schools tonight. So thanks, Carl.
Thanks. Any questions for Burley? Seeing none, then is there a motion from an elementary trustee to authorize the engagement of Paradigm V2 Architect for the renovation and construction of CS Porter Middle School? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, second by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Smith?
I have no idea if I have a conflict, but I'm going to abstain, just in case.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees, elementary trustees in favor of the motion to authorize the engagement of Paradigm V2 Architect for the renovation and construction of CS Porter Middle School, please indicate by raising your hand. And it would reflect that it's unanimous as elementary trustees present, except for trustee Smith, who has abstained from voting. Then we move on to item number four, which is to accept the withdrawal of D Lower Construction's bid for the Egg Ed Process Kitchen and waive forfeiture of the bid security. It looks like there was a typographical error that resulted in a lower than they meant to kind of bid, and so the recommendation is to allow them to withdraw their bid and to waive the forfeiture of their bid security. Is that correct, Pat? Or is this, Burley?
It's Burley's, that is correct.
Sorry, Burley, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong...
No, that's okay. Yeah, so if you look at page 77, it's labeled there, wrong. We're, actually, the letter from D Lower Construction is on 77. If you look at the second paragraph, the bideret welding price of $68,751, there's actually a decimal moved over, and what came through on the bid was $687.51. So, there was a, a decimal was in the wrong place, which created quite a difference in the original, in the bidding process. He then submitted this letter the next day, letting us know of the error. When we do the bids, we, we ask for a 10% bid bond that we're able to, to take if they back out of the project. As is stated, we're recommending that we, we go ahead and waive that fee, knowing that it was a clerical error, and be happy to answer any questions.
Trustee?
And is your, is your next proposer ready to take on the job?
Yes, and it's actually next agenda item, and they are.
Okay. Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none, then is there a motion to accept the withdrawal of the D Lower Construction bid and to waive the forfeiture of their bid security? Moved by trustee Kendall, and seconded by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion?
I just want to say that I thought this letter was really gracious, and they must feel really bad about that. I just thought, you know, it's never happened to them before, kind of thing. You just feel really bad for them, so...
Yeah, and the letter doesn't do the conversation we had any justice, to be honest. He did, he felt really bad about it.
Thanks. Is there any other board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of accepting the withdrawal of the D Lower Construction bid and to waive the forfeiture of their bid security, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to number five, which is to authorize the engagement of general contractor, the general contractor, Western Interstate, Inc., to be engaged as the general contractor for the Egg Ed Process Kitchen construction remodel, and I'm assuming these were the next lowest bidders?
Yes, Western Interstate was the next lowest bidder, and we have worked with them before in the past. They did a great job on Paxson Elementary, and so we are recommending that we issue this project to them as well.
Any questions for Burley? Is that a question?
Yeah. How much higher was the bid?
I believe it was, I knew I was going to get asked that question tonight. I believe it was about $70,000 higher. So, which, which is basically a little bit lower than the clerical error, so you just put him out of it. And, and I do want to thank Mark Quinn for also hanging out with us tonight with Western Interstate, so thanks, Mark.
I guess, didn't Western Interstate pick up Paxson the same way?
That is correct. That's how I delivered it to him when I called him as well, so, same story.
Any other questions for Burley? And so, do we have a motion to authorize the engagement of Western Interstate, Inc., to act as general contractor on the Egg Ed Process Kitchen construction and remodel project? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, seconded by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all those in favor of the motion to authorize Western Interstate, Inc., to act as general contractor, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And I wish I could give you guys a prize for staying the longest, but kind of out of prizes, out of prizes tonight. But thank you both for being here. Thanks. And so then we move on to number six, which is to grant permission to issue a request for qualifications for general contractor, for general contractor for the renovation, remodel, and expansion of Big Sky High School. And so this is what starts one of the last bond projects, right? Burley, is that where we're at?
That is right. It's our second to last, our next agenda item will be the last, but yeah, we're, we'll bring the committee back together and go through the GCCM process. And we'll start that very soon. I believe Big Sky might be, might have posted last Sunday.
Any questions for Burley? Seeing none. Is there a motion to grant permission to issue a request for qualifications for the general contractor construction manager, also known as manager, for the services associated with changes to Big Sky High School? It's moved by trustee Wake, and seconded by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And trustee Newbold had to go home to relieve her babysitter, and trustee Lorenzen has stepped out of the room, so it is unanimous as to trustees in the room at this time, which is Smith, Decker, Beers, Holland, Kendall, McDonald, and Wake. Then we move on to number seven, which is to grant permission to solicit requests for qualifications of a general contractor and construction manager at CS Porter Middle School. So this is an elementary action item. And so, Burley, it's the same process, except this is the last, one of the last budget or bond projects, is that correct?
This is the last.
Okay.
So we are excited about it, and I believe it gets posted this Sunday.
Okay. Any questions for Burley? Seeing none. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee to grant permission to issue the request for qualifications for general contractor construction manager services in connection with the renovation of CS Porter Middle School? Moved by trustee Decker, is there a second? Seconded by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of the motion to grant permission to issue the request for qualifications for the GCCM for CS Middle School, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to eight, which is to approve the Jeanette Rankin Elementary Utility Easement. This is again an elementary action item, and it looks like we're trying to get the water to the fire hydrant now? Is that correct?
Yeah, so if, if memory serves you right, we, I believe, a few board meetings ago, we approved the easement for the main water to be hooked up to the site. Now this will allow us to hook up the fire hydrant to the water main, to the site, so... And I believe that is on page 78 for your viewing.
Any questions for Burley? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the attached public utility easement for Jeanette Rankin Elementary School from elementary trustee? It's moved by trustee Kendall, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor of approving the attached public utility easement for Jeanette Rankin Elementary School, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to C1, which is to approve the personnel report, which is found beginning on page 83. Anything of note on this report, Dave?
I would, so we, we've broken it down into the different subtopics. This is, we, the personnel report, which starts on page 83 and runs for 40 pages, encompasses many of the items that we'll kind of break out a little bit below. It is, it's a typical May report, but it's a very non-typical personnel report. This is the report within which we look at reelection of the non-tenured teachers, we look at termination of some non-tenured teachers, reelection of tenured teachers, et cetera. So, I think what would probably be the best start is to, on the very first one, the personnel report, the general report, which is found, the high school reports on page 109 to 111, and then elementary is 83 through 87, and then we can break down the subparts, if that, and I can answer questions that people might have.
So, is it okay to consider this, that the portion of the longer report, which deals with the routine reports that we see each month, as this first action item? So, would there be a motion that the trustees approve the items provided on the personnel report on the particular pages Dave just identified? Moved by trustee Wake, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. That is unanimous as to all trustees present. And now we get down to the more specific subtopics. C2 is the reelection of tenured and non-tenured administrators. And so, Dave, can you identify which page this item is on?
Absolutely. Page 88 is where you would find the elementary administrators, and 112 is where you would find the secondary administrators. So it's both the tenured and non-tenured administrators in that attachment.
Any questions for Dave? Seeing none. Is there a motion to reelect the tenured and non-tenured administrators identified on the pages as Dave identified? Moved by trustee Wake, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Kendall. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of re-electing, which is an interesting term, the tenured and non-tenured administrators identified by the Human Resources Office on the personnel report on the pages identified by Mr. Roth, please indicate by raising your hand. That's just, okay. It's unanimous as to all trustees who are present. And then we move on to three, which is the reelection of tenured and non-tenured teachers. So Dave, could you tell us which pages we should look at for that?
This is the bulk of the report. Elementary teachers, tenured and non-tenured are pages 89 through 98, and then non, high school, rather, is 113 through 118, and those are those really comprehensive lists, which reelect all of those teachers.
Thanks. Any questions for Dave? Seeing none. Is there a motion to reelect the tenured and non-tenured teachers identified in the personnel report? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, and seconded by trustee McDonald. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to number four, which is the termination of non-tenured teachers, and which section of this larger report?
I'm sorry, the elementary teachers are listed on 101, and the high school are on 120. This is the termination of non-tenured teachers. Those are positions that are the result of either late hires, staff reductions, or budget constraints, so a much smaller list. I just was adding, there would be nine teachers on the elementary and seven on the high school that are identified.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions for Dave? Seeing none. Is there a motion to terminate the non-tenured teachers identified on the pages that Dave just identified? Moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Kendall. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of terminating the non-tenured teachers listed on the pages identified by Mr. Roth, please indicate by raising your hand. That's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to five, which is the reelection of specialists. And so which section of the report are these specialists on?
On page 99, this is a new thing we, we've added this year. We have many specialist OTs, speech pathologists, and this year we've added school nurses, who are really not tenured or non-tenured staff, however, they're included in the MEA contract. And so the purpose behind identifying them there specifically was to, to not throw them in with the tenured, non-tenured, but at least to identify that we would be re-electing them for the next school year.
Any questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion to reelect the specialists identified on the pages by Mr. Roth? Moved by trustee Kendall. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Any board discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous to all trustees present. We're on to the second to the last item, which is graduation assignments. Trustee Wake, I think we already have yours, right?
Six.
Okay. And so, just so we'll have something in the minutes, who would like to attend Willard Alternative High School program? If you can just raise your hand, and I'll yell out your names. I'll go. Great. And then Big Sky? Willard is me. Oh, do you want to go to Willard? No, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Lenora, I didn't hear what your question is. I think so, but there's also some trustees not present right now, so. Six, and Heidi left now? So we still have a quorum. Yeah, okay. And so Big Sky High School, if you raise your hand, I'll just call out. Smith, Beers, Holland, McDonald. Hellgate. Smith, Holland, McDonald, and Beers. Sorry, I didn't see my, Sentinel. Beers, Holland, and McDonald. Adult Ed. I'll go. Holland. Seeley Swan. Dick, Smith, Decker, and Beers. And then, do you want formal notes on C.S. Porter Meadow Hill in Washington? Or do you want to send out an email later for that? Yeah, just for the middle school, because I think, you know, we're not formally part of, yeah. I mean, it's really hard to do all three. So with that, public comment on any non-agenda items?
Hey, Marcia, real quick, can I just add, just for the minutes, that if, if our schedules change and I can get added to one of these lists, how long do I have?
You can, I think, get added the day of, because what we decided to do is, instead of listing the trustees who will be attending in each of the programs, we're going to list all the trustees.
Okay.
And so that really takes... Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll find some. We'll borrow someone's robe. And so public comment on non-agenda items? I'll pretend I'm a member of the public.
Sure.
I understand.
Heidi tells us that the levies both passed.
Yep, that's what I was...